Okay, it is 10 o'clock and I will call this Washoe County Commissioner meeting to order. We will start with a salute of the flag and I'm going to ask Mr. Edwards to lead us in the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now we will go to roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman Vice Chair.
Here.
Michael Clark.
President.
Mari Luis Garcia.
Here.
Larry Andriola.
Press Secretary.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
And Assistant District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galatini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, can you please lead us into public comment?
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
We have a very large queue, so if I call your name second, please wait to be called to the podium. First up, we have Alicia Lindsay-Dietrich, followed by Richard Poma.
My name is Alicia Lindsay-Dietrich and I just finished the Washoe County Leadership Academy. It was a fantastic experience and I want to thank you all for supporting that. I also want to give a special thank you to Commissioner Garcia for helping support our class project. The commission actually supported the class project also and helped us do some great work at Jan Evans Juvenile Detention Center. And so we're super excited to bring art to those kids. And one of the things that we felt was very important was to send them off into the community after they come out of detention and give them resources so that they can continue to do art, continue to get the benefit of, you know, learning better self-regulation, learning how to express their feelings in a more productive way. So we developed these art packages and Commissioner Garcia generously has donated $2,500 to help us at least get the first round of packages out to the kids, so we're really grateful. That's it. Thank you so much. Oh, and we will be back in June to present our project to the whole commission, so we're excited to do that. Thank you.
Richard Poma, followed by Robert Beatles.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for having me here and I appreciate being able to speak. About 17 months ago, I bought a property out in Washoe Valley. And they had, I did my title research and I had everything, you know, looked at and so I purchased the property. And so when I bought some metal buildings to put up on the property for my garages so I can store my cars, my vehicles, my tools and everything in there, I bought the buildings and I believed that all things were secure and there was no problems with building on the property. Had I known there was a problem after, I wouldn't have bought the property because I don't want to have to be held up. So about 17 months ago, I bought the property and then around, say, August, end of August, I put in for building permits and I had all my site plans all done up by K-2 Engineering. And I waited and I waited and then finally got, had somebody get back to me and his name was, let's see, Raider, Harrison Raider. And so he said, let me look into this. And then he looked into it and what had happened about 20 years prior to that and three other owners prior to that, somebody had built some buildings on the property that weren't totally permitted. There was nothing on there. Since that was built, there was more permits given to that property, to other property owners that had it. And so they built on the property and now I own the property and I'm trying to get my garages up and I'm told that, well, there was no permits on these buildings here years ago and it fell through the cracks. And one thing today that I really loved was we saluted that flag, justice. And I don't feel I'm justly being taken care of as a tax-paying citizen and a tax-paying homeowner, property owner in Washoe. I'm being held up on my building permits. I have my site plans, everything's in and I waited and I guess Raider, Harrison Raider, passed away. But I, and I kept sending emails and calling in and calling in, sending emails, nothing. And this went on for months. And then finally, finally, I called in and I got ahold of somebody and they told me.
Thank, Mr. Poma, thank you so much. And I'm going to ask the manager to have some staff come and see what we can do to support you.
Thank you very much.
Robert Beatles, followed by Matt Herrick.
Good morning, Robert Beatles, Reno, Nevada. Please put all my comments on the permanent record. I thought I'd just kind of pop in unannounced and got kind of a busy day. Only got three minutes, so I'll get right at it. This is not addressed to Commissioner Herman or to Commissioner Clark, of course. I was looking through this pork-filled agenda, but more specifically, the budget. Now, how is it that you're allotting at least $23.1 million to some Indigenous fund, $21.9 million to homelessness fund, $6.15 million to a debt service, yet only $3.4 million to our most precious senior community? Last week, we saw you guys spend another $30 million on the homeless, some $5.5 million for a toxic waste dump that you plan on putting them on. And then we've already spent some, what, $70 million on that circus tent that you guys call the Cares Campus? And then tens of millions more running it. So where's the money really going? It surely isn't going to the homeless and it's not going to the Indigenous. If you take a walk downtown, if you dare, you're going to see what I mean. I tell you what, this is quite the little industry that you guys have made out of this self-created crisis. If we ran our businesses like you guys run this county, we'd all be in jail or out of business at best. Now you want another $12.6 million for probably less than an actual 200,000 registered voters. That's $63 per supposed voter and God only knows how much more money you're giving the ROV in addition to this. We've given you plans that would cost less than $2 million per election and most of that goes to postage. In fact, we're still waiting for the ROV to explain to us why, when we just take the tax records and we put them against the voter records, we have tens of thousands of issues. And that doesn't even take into account all the people that have moved. Now, for rough math, we have around 80,000 precious seniors in Washoe. You're only going to give them $42 per person. And when you take the homeless, say there's 1,000 of them, you're allotting them $21,900 per person. That doesn't even include the 100 million or more that you've already spent. So where is this money really going? Where's the public audit? We demand one. Why are good people that apply for jobs in this county turned away and inferiors or Communist groups brought in in their place? It's obviously that you're not working for the people. The question everybody should be asking is why are so many mediocre public servants that make over $100,000 a year now multimillionaires? It's time that the people look into where all this money is going and what's really going on here. We the people have had enough, but thank you, Commissioner Herman, and thank you, Commissioner Clark, for representing we the people. I suggest the rest of y'all resign.
No clapping. Madam Clerk, can you please tell me who the next public commenter is?
Matt Herrick is up and then Poojam Shivam.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Herrick. I'm a principal scientist and a division manager at Broadbent and Associates. I'm here today to represent Broadbent. We're a Nevada corporation founded in 1987 and we have about 75 staff in Nevada and about half those staff reside in Washoe County with our office here in Reno. I'm here today to provide public comment regarding the administrative permit that was recently rescinded for the Gerlach geothermal exploration project. Broadbent has supported ORMAT on various projects in Nevada and Washoe County for several years, including work on a proposed exploration project at Gerlach. Specific to Gerlach, we provide hydrologic services or hydrologic expertise, which is surface and groundwater services, to support the BLM permitting process. We have recently prepared a water resources monitoring plan for the Gerlach project. The plan is designed to understand and protect natural local water resources during exploration activities. From my experience, ORMAT takes environmental matters very seriously and is a good company. Broadbent is in support of renewable energy and we recognize the importance of this project and other similar projects to further diversity of our nation's energy resources. We are empathetic to the local residents who oppose the project. I myself live in South Reno, off of Mount Rose Highway, approximately one mile from the Steamboat Geothermal Power Plant. I have lived there for eight years now and during that time, um, excuse me, I have lived there for eight years now and during that time have not experienced adverse or negative conditions due to the proximity of my home to the power plant. It's important to recognize that what's being proposed at Gerlach is exploration and not development of a plant at this point in time. So we asked the board, the county board, to reconsider the decision to rescind the geothermal exploration permit for the ORMAT-Gerlach project. Thank you.
Poojam Shivam, followed by Paul Thompson.
Hi, I am a PhD candidate who studies geothermal systems and I am appalled by the decision made by Washoe County and the lies that Burning Man Foundation, Friends of Nevada Wilderness, and others in the opposition have knowingly spread to the media and public. And I'm here to expose how the participants in the opposition are hypocrites. Geothermal is one of the most efficient and reliable resources of renewable energy. If you were to compare the same energy output as solar or wind, geothermal surpasses efficiency in both cost and land use. In August of '22, there was an initial environmental assessment of 152 pages, which took concerns from the opposition and other environmental groups, made revisions, and a 301 final page, a final assessment was approved back in October. This document states that there is no present or future threat to the species and wildlife in that area and ensures that in order for ORMAT to operate under a permit, that it is still remaining responsible for rehabilitation regardless of what happens. So I am dumbfounded by the logic that the opposition has convinced you to reconsider their permit, starting with the logic of Friends of Nevada Wilderness, which somehow opposes a renewable energy permit that has minimal impact but has no problem supporting the expansion of Southern Nevada municipalities that will reduce wildlife habitat. And they also had no clear stance on the propositions for solar plants outside Washoe County, which also cleared much more land for wildlife habitat. And water rights is a legitimate concern, I get that, but it is wrong and false to fearmonger the public and say that your homes will sink into the ground or that your water system will dry up or be polluted. This is very false because there is a 77-page hydrologic assessment that explains everything and is publicly available and goes as far to point out that the total water use for initial drilling at the, at the Gerlach site is half of what Burning Man spends every year. And Washoe, is Washoe County really going to ignore the irony in supporting a group that hosts over 80,000 people in the span of two weeks that we know has wasted more water than any geothermal plant that's operating today? And yearly has done nothing but to strain Washoe County waste through their trash and plastic use, contribute more carbon dioxide emissions than any renewable energy plant, and increase crime rates within our own county? Not to mention the strain put on transportation. It begs the question if we really care about the land or is this really just catering to the rich and wealthy in their romps in the desert? If Burning Man is so bold to be against permitting on the basis of environmental impact of renewable energy, then I would be so bold to suggest that we ask for their environmental impact so, and see if they can match the thoroughness of a 300-page assessment. It speaks volumes as we approach Earth Day that the county decides to entertain the idea of siding with groups that have argued points and, against any type of logic. So I really want you guys to reconsider, are we really, really willing to hinder progress towards renewable energy or is this over a fact that a few people can't understand the science? Thank you.
Paul Thompson, followed by Scott Nichols.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Paul Thompson. I'm a 26-year resident of Washoe County. I have daughters that attend Huttaker Elementary School and I have an undergraduate and master's degree from the University of Nevada Reno. Living in Reno has afforded me the opportunity to work for United States Senators Richard Bryan and Harry Reid. It's also allowed me to serve on the Energy Transmission Committees for Governor Jim Gibbons and most recently as the Chairman of the Public Utilities Commission and Energy Advisor on the Sandoval Administration. I'm here today to ask for reconsideration of the vote taken last Tuesday on Washoe Admin Permit 22-0025, which was an administrative permit on federal lands to conduct exploratory drilling. I want to tell you the origin story of ORMAT. ORMAT and the geothermal industry owes everything to Washoe County. You might not know this, but in 1985, we sold our, one of our first binary power plants in Washoe County at the Steamboat Complex. It was the first-of-its-kind geothermal power plant. And the project was supported by the commission, the state legislature, and the federal government. And it ended up spurring the development of an industry in the United States. ORMAT, a renewable startup at the time, met with then-Governor Richard Bryan and the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada and decided to locate its corporate headquarters in the geothermal epicenter of Sparks, Nevada. Today, we're located in Reno and we've acquired that Steamboat Geothermal Complex and went on to develop 400 megawatts of geothermal projects at 16 power plants. Our most recent is the North Valley Power Plant, just south of Gerlach. And we employ 421 employees in Nevada. We provide enough power for 400,000 homes and we contribute over $32 million a year in operations, taxes, and royalties while avoiding 60 million tons of CO2 annually. ORMAT and the geothermal industry behind me has brought millions of dollars to Nevada through the cooperative research at the University of Nevada Reno and the Great Basin Center for Geothermal Energy. What you heard last Tuesday, or much of it, was not germane to the administrative permit before you. I don't have time to refute all the misguided Burning Man talking points regarding the facility that does not exist, a facility that has not been designed, and a facility that we don't know will ever exist. I can however, direct you to the environmental assessment conducted by the Bureau of Land Management that took over two years to develop. It provides an irrefutable record of Burning Man's participation, Gerlach's residents' participation, and the concessions and protections that were added for an, for an action only being sought to drill a couple of wells to explore for geothermal energy. It's worth noting that a lithium mine that takes up 2,000 acres adjacent to Gerlach can drill with just 15 days' notice. In closing, you're going to hear from experts behind me, employees, residents, and vendors who share ORMAT's concerns that we should not let special interests make the commission second-guess the work of the Bureau of Land Management, the unanimous approval of the Board of Adjustment, who made all of the legal findings necessary to approve our non-discretionary permit. Thank you.
Scott Nichols, followed by Josh Nordquist.
My name is Scott Nichols, 6140 Pluma Street with ORMAT Technologies. I've been in the renewable, actually geothermal energy business for the last 15 years. I've been in the Natural Resource Administration and Regulatory Programs for the last 35 years. What I want to point out about geothermal resources is that this geothermal resource, geothermal in general, is the most environmentally friendly, socially compatible, energy resource we have the opportunity to develop. Unfortunately, geothermal energy bears a disproportionate and absolutely exponentially different and more stringent level of environmental standards than any other resource development that we have available. As Mr. Thompson pointed out, a lithium project actually owned by a company on the edge of Gerlach can drill with 15 days' notice to the federal government. Geothermal energy at a state level, at a Western state's level, is one of our Governors' Association's highest priorities. The Heat Beneath Our Feet Initiative has been throughout everywhere, well, throughout the Western states, Colorado, Utah, Idaho, and Nevada, to look at ways we can maximize these resources because they are so environmentally friendly. Gerlach has a 25-year lease history. For 25 years, leases have been, been paid for by the industry and individuals to be able to develop geothermal resources. And it's not been until the last five years that a real serious look has been taken at these resources. Drilling has gone on. We're not proposing the first drilling to ever be done at Gerlach. Drilling has been done at Gerlach for over 10 years. It's not been regular, it's been very intermittent. And that intermittent drilling will continue, hopefully, as we look at these resources in the future. I've worked in Gerlach since 2009 and I've worked in the community for the last two years, on and off, with County Manager Brown. We've met with the Citizens Advisory Board and I can tell you that Gerlach has expressed concerns and those concerns have been carried forward to our plans and to the environmental documents that have been conducted by the BLM. With that said, I'd just like you to reconsider the administrative permit denial that was issued last week. I think it's imperative that you reconsider that, that decision. It's important to, to us as a state, it's important to ORMAT, obviously, but it, it is an absolute 180-degree turn in the direction that, that we're looking at going as, as a country. So with that, thank you for hopefully reconsidering that administrative permit denial.
Josh Nordquist, followed by Carrie Rohmeyer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I come wearing many hats. I'm a Washoe County resident for almost 20 years. I am a member of the geothermal industry for 15 years. I'm an employee of ORMAT for 15 years. I also have had the pleasure to serve the state, currently as Commissioner on the, on the Commission of Mineral Resources for the state, as well as previously on the New Energy Industry Task Force under Governor Sandoval. I come to you today as a community member, sorry, let me add, my wife is a teacher in the Nevada Education System and my kids also attend public school here in Reno. I've worked in the industry for 15 years and here, Nevada, geothermal is one of our greatest assets. I plan on finishing my career here. I've gotten married, I have a family here. I teach my kids about the importance of sustainable development and renewable energy. As a father, I'm proud to show my children how geothermal has made such a positive impact in the state, as well as showing them the unending glory of our landscapes, both day and night. Last year, I oversaw the, in my role in ORMAT, I oversee all of ORMAT's drilling activities throughout the world. We have seven active sites at any given time around the world and we've been doing this for over 20 years. Last year, I oversaw the drilling, development drilling of our project at North Valley, which is 15 miles due south of Gerlach. We had two active drilling rigs there during this time. During the Burning Man event, we shut down our activities for over 10 days due to major safety concerns because it was almost impossible to get emergency vehicles to the site due to traffic for the event. This came at a considerable cost to us, however, we were able to successfully complete eight wells at the project with no negative impact whatsoever. I don't understand the commission's denial of the federally approved project at Gerlach, which has been thoroughly reviewed and approved by the BLM and the federal government. Again, geothermal is one of Nevada's greatest assets, it has been for decades and it will be for many decades to come. It has brought clean energy and clear skies and lifelong careers to our rural communities and I sincerely ask that you reverse this decision and consider it fully. Thank you.
Carrie Rohmeyer, followed by Erica Fries.
My name is Dr. Carrie Rohmeyer and I come before you this morning to request reconsideration of the Gerlach administrative permit denial. My, my request is on behalf of ORMAT Technologies, where I work, and one based on expertise in land use planning and policy that I've gained from 20 years working and planning research and practice, specifically here in industrial and infrastructure development in Northern Nevada. The requests you're going to hear this morning vary based on people's expertise. And what I wish to add to this public commentary is a statement of my review of the applicable, specific, and comprehensive plans which universally support geothermal land use. At the county and regional scales, it's clear that the Washoe County High Desert Area Plan, which is of course part of Washoe County's master plan, recognizes geothermal is appropriate for general rural zones. Article 328 of the Washoe County Development Code further outlines development for geothermal exploration and conditions projects through things like administrative permits, through the community-engaged planning process which occurred for this permit. Page 58 of the Gerlach Economic Development Plan acknowledges that geothermal resources exist right in the vicinity of the town. And not only did BLM approve the NEPA environmental assessment for exploration, they did so based on the Black Rock Desert, High Rock Canyon, Emmercan Trails National Conservation Area Plan, which is not only a mouthful, but they came up with a finding of no significant impact and this is based on a two-year review of social, environmental, and economic impacts to the Gerlach community. And even Burning Man Project recognizes the value of geothermal energy and its production and in its 2030 Sustainability Report for the property next door at, they call 360. So to deny land use outcomes anticipated in local, state, and federal plans and policies undermines larger and longer-term goals for both people and place. And I say that emphatically. I'm a Washoe County resident, a voter, a property owner, a mother in public school, and I value the service that you do for our community. I ask that you think about sustainability more deeply, the Anthropocene, particularly here in the high desert. To me, this means we each have a responsibility to reduce our climate-induced threats, things like mega wildfires, aridity and droughts, urban heat effects, flooding from atmospheric rivers. These require you to discern the difference between NIMBY fear and sound science, which ORMAT takes with integrity. I ask you to take action to support renewable energy, not only from its environmental benefit, which is direct, but to bolster our Washoe County economy through green energy.
Erica Fries, followed by John Ackerly.
Erica Fries, for the record. I'm the Director of Business Development for ORMAT and I'm here before you this morning to request reconsideration of the Gerlach administrative permit denial. My request is based on almost two decades of rangeland ecology work and environmental permitting experience, mostly here in Nevada. I made a deliberate choice to work for ORMAT and I take pride in developing renewable energy projects for one of the most respected geothermal energy companies in the world. The requests for reconsideration will differ, but I would like to add to the public comment of my firsthand knowledge of the environmental review and public input process for this geothermal exploration project. At last week's commission meeting, you all heard a lot of testimony regarding issues surrounding the development of a power plant, which at the present time is not on the table and would require another permitting process with BLM and Washoe County. Both processes allowing numerous times for concerned citizens to provide public comment. So specific to Gerlach, BLM geothermal leases were required in competitive lease auctions in '92, 2001, 2019, and 2020. The geothermal lease sales go through a NEPA process prior to being offered up for sale. This process is also the time that stipulations are added to the leases to protect the environment. A 60-day pre-scoping period was held in October and November of 2020 for the full geothermal development project. With the public comment provided, ORMAT withdrew the utilization plan and submitted an operations plan for exploration only to BLM. Burning Man and the community provided comment. A 30-day public scoping period for the exploration project was initiated in December 2021 by BLM and Burning Man made public comment. A 30-day public comment period for the draft EA was initiated by BLM in August 2020. Burning Man also provided public comment. Revisions to the EA were made based on public comment to reduce the final EA fonzie and decision record. The neighborhood meeting for the administrative permit was held July 19, 2022. Burning Man and Gerlach residents both participated. The revised dismissal was made in November of 2022 based on the omission of well locations through the BLM NEPA process. The Board of Adjustments unanimously approved on January 5, 2023, with conditions of approval. That was the only point in which Burning Man and Gerlach residents did not provide public comment. I ask that you reconsider this project has been through a rigorous federal process with multiple opportunities for public comment. I would argue that it is not this board's responsibility to deny a permit based on the fact that Burning Man and Gerlach residents did not agree with BLM's decision when staff made findings that were in conformance with Washoe County Code Article 808. This exploration project requires an extensive water monitoring program, requires state permits that protect waters of the state in addition to this administrative permit. We are good neighbors, as we are here in Reno at our Steamboat Facility. We're good stewards of the resources and provide renewable energy. of the resources and provide renewable energy.
John Ackerly, followed by Candace Peatt.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Ackerly, for the record. I come before you this morning to request reconsideration of the Gerlach administrative permit denial. I'm a third-generation Nevadan, graduate with an undergraduate degree and a master's degree from the University of Nevada, and I'm also a registered professional engineer in this state. I've worked for over 10 years in geothermal development and reservoir management for ORMAT as a reservoir engineer, and I believe that the proposed project at Gerlach represents a unique opportunity to promote economic growth, create jobs, but ultimately contribute to the development of clean renewable energy. The exploration project, as it was approved in the BLM EA, is a carefully planned analysis of the geothermal system, with serious consideration to the environmental impacts and also to the nearby community. We designed tests to monitor and assess the geothermal system with as few wells as possible in order to decide whether or not to move forward with a full development plan. I've participated in many of these projects, some successfully moving forward with additional evaluation from the BLM and all stakeholders, while some others have not. And in that case, we carefully recover the land, plug and abandon the wells, and leave the project as it was found. ORMAT has a world-class team that works to develop a geothermal project that will operate sustainably for many years to come. And this means, once we have a plant operating, returning 100% of the produced geothermal fluid back to the geothermal system, maintaining the pressure, not causing subsidence, and not pulling in any nearby surface water. Given the benefits to geothermal development, I believe this project represents a critical step forward to a more sustainable future for the community and the county. Furthermore, the geothermal exploration project would ultimately create jobs and provide a boost to the local economy, offering opportunities for both skilled workers and skilled contractors. In conclusion, I respectfully ask that you reconsider the permit denial and consider that the positive impacts of this project are ultimately what's best for the county. Thank you.
Candace Peatt, followed by Charlie Sperry.
Good morning, Commissioners and all. For the record, my name is Candace Peatt. I come to you also wearing many hats this morning, but first I want to thank you all for taking the time to hear us. I am here to also ask the reconsideration for geothermal exploration drilling near Gerlach. I'll tell you a little bit about myself, because I think it's important. I've been in Reno, Nevada, for about 20 years. I also live within a few miles of the steamboat operation plant that we have there. We are very vested in our community, the folks that work for ORMAT. You know, we're not just employees of ORMAT. We care about our communities, as you heard from a lot of the other team members and other roles that support this industry. You know, we coach little league soccer, even though we don't have kids in the community. We volunteer time, on our own time on nights and weekends, to clean up parks and things like that, right? So I thought it was very important that you understand the folks that are here talking to you guys and where we come from. It's important that we have a clear path forward to successfully continue providing safe and health, you know, healthy, green energy for the state of Nevada and other areas. So I come to you as the Vice President of Environmental Health and Safety at ORMAT. I'm one of the newest members there. However, I've been in the utility-based industry for over 16 years and can tell you that ORMAT has not disappointed me in the seven months that I have come on board, in the amount of resources and the amount of expertise and funding and care and attention that they put towards making sure that the projects that we're looking at are safe for the environment and safe for the folks in these neighborhoods. There's never, you know, any short of attention, the permitting process, as you heard from most of these folks back here, our engineering staff, it's not a willy-nilly process. You know, we start these projects and we plan them and we permit them and we look at them for months and years to ensure that we're not missing anything. So I hope that you guys will reconsider, based on facts, that there's been no studies proven that the health of water or depleting of resources or, you know, any environmental health or safety concerns. So that's my ask for you today, and I appreciate you all taking the time to hear us.
Charlie Sperry, followed by John Tuttle.
Good morning. My name is Charlie Sperry. I'm with Nexus Environmental Consultants. I am a wildlife biologist, but most importantly, I am a NEPA permitting specialist. I come here today to request that the Washto County Commissioners reconsider the Gerlach geothermal exploration project and their administrative permit. Geothermal energy is a heat produced deep in the earth's core. It is clean, renewable resource that can be harnessed for use as heat and electricity. Renewable energy like geothermal is necessary to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and pollutants in the air and provide for a sustainable future. ORMAT submitted the proposed Gerlach geothermal exploration project operations plan for geothermal exploration drilling to the Federal Land Management Agency, the Bureau of Land Management. Geothermal exploration is used to determine if a viable resource is present that may support an operating facility. ORMAT is not proposing an operating facility at this time. Following submittal of the operations plan, the proposed project went through a rigorous National Environmental Policy Act process, also known as the NEPA process. During this NEPA process, the BLM invited agencies to cooperate in the development of their analysis. The BLM prepared an environmental assessment in conjunction with cooperating agencies, including the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, the National Park Service Historic, or National Historic Trails Office, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, who all worked together collaboratively to review the proposed project and avoid and minimize potential impacts. It should be noticed that Washto County was invited to participate and declined to participate in the process. Any impacts identified were disclosed in the final environmental assessment. The final environmental assessment found there was no significant impacts to the resources analyzed. Therefore, the BLM issued a finding of no significant impact. Goal 11 of the Washto County Resource Management Plan manages the use, extraction, and development of geothermal, wind, and solar resources in a sustainable and compatible way that protects both the resource and surrounding land uses. As stated in Policies C.11.1, Washto County will promote geothermal development, except where mitigation measures will not protect the existing air and water quality standards. As concluded in the final environmental assessment, no significant impacts included, no significant impacts were included to these resources, and they were not identified for the project. Firsthand, I have seen that ORMAT actively engages in the communities they work in and performs exploration activities in a sustainable way. ORMAT is integral to our county's renewable energy future, and additional exploration opportunities will provide renewable energy now and for the next generation. Additionally, their geothermal exploration at projects like the Gerlach geothermal...
John Tuttle, followed by Robin Zusa.
Good morning. My name is John Tuttle. Appreciate the opportunity, Commissioners, I really do. Little personal background, my wife and I are residents of Silver Springs area, Northern Sparks area. Been coming to Nevada for almost 40 years, primarily to see the outdoors, the environment, get out, hike, bike, and kayak and the like, fish, and yet also to support the development, the efficient development of some of the resources around here. We've been here for a year and a half, permanent now, and look forward to continuing to support the industry. I voice my support for the efficient and responsible development of geothermal industry. We've done work throughout the western United States, all over globally, South America, other areas, but everywhere I go, I see geothermal as a solution to some of our energy needs going forward. And it's, like I said, it's done responsibly, efficiently, safely, and I think we've seen a long history of successful projects that have added value to local communities where they have these resources available. And this is one of those areas. Nevada is very strong in geothermal opportunities, in the right place, done the right way, with the right efficiencies and knowledge of the environmental requirements. So going forward, I'm a manager of a service company. We provide products for various, all geothermal, as well as oil and gas, various other industries. I've got 28 employees, about half of those are associated with the geothermal industry right now, some in Nevada, some elsewhere, but they provide, you know, tax benefits and support for all of our families, and I think we provide benefits to the companies we work with. I've worked in the Steamboat Springs area, also up in the Gerlach area, and I'm really impressed by the responsibility that these companies show that are developing these resources for long-term energy needs that the United States really needs, especially these days when we're trying to replace some of the fossil fuel requirements with renewable energies. So with that, I just wish to voice my support of the process going forward. Hopefully, we'll review the process that's taken place recently and hopefully change and allow development, exploration at least, at Gerlach. And I was sitting in my chair reading a motto up there on the wall, "Working together regionally to provide and sustain a safe, secure, and healthy community." And I'm very sincere, I think that's what this organization does and allows the development of this opportunity. Thank you.
Robin Zusa, followed by Jason Ritchie.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Robin Zusa, for the record, and I work for ORMAT Technologies. I am the Director of Exploration, and I am here to request the reconsideration of the administrative permit denial for the Gerlach exploration project. I'm a geologist. I'm going to talk a little bit more technically today, just so you get to know our science, our integrity, and our passion for geothermal projects. I've been with ORMAT for seven years, into the geothermal industry for seven years. I work with a highly-technical, world-renowned group of engineers and scientists dedicated to bringing renewable green energy projects through geothermal developments to the globe, and mostly in the western U.S. and mostly in Nevada. The main point I want to leave you with today is that geothermal development projects are not ubiquitous. They don't exist everywhere. We do a lot of science to look for renewable energy projects, and specifically geothermal, and they are challenging to find, and we take the time to do it right and with integrity and with world-class science. So even across Nevada, all those hot springs are not viable resources for commercial developments. The hot springs that you may have soaked in, while very nice and warm, are actually likely too cold for us to develop. So we are actually limited in some of our resources, even though, as you heard earlier, Nevada has a world-class resource in geothermal, but not all of them can be developed for projects. So in order for us to understand our resources and to do it right to bring more green energy projects to the table, we need to be allowed to do our good science and explore for projects. To develop geothermal, there are multiple phases, multiple stage gates that we go through to understand if a project is viable to develop. This is good for us, and this is good for the community. We go slow and take our time. So for the Gerlach project specifically, we are in the first stage, which is exploration drilling or resource confirmation. To do this, we need to drill wells deep into the subsurface to explore for two things simply. One is temperature, and one is permeability. So a temperature is high temperature, you know, if you're interested, it's 130 degrees Celsius to 160 degrees Celsius, that's like a low range to moderate. We're also looking for permeability, which is naturally occurring hydrothermal fluid flow in the subsurface that can be produced to the surface. Our exploration drilling is a rigorously well-regulated process that is safe and it isolates what's happening in the subsurface from any surface waters or anything. Testing is short. We need to be able to explore our resources and understand what we have. Let's diversify our green energy portfolios. Please consider approving...
Jason Ritchie, followed by Simon Webison.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jason Ritchie. I'm the Environmental Health and Safety Manager for Resources for ORMAT Technologies, and I've come to ask that you reconsider the Gerlach administrative permit denial. Just a little bit of myself, I've lived in Washto County for three years now. My wife is a special education teacher for St. Elementary. So if ORMAT was a baseball team, these folks are the team, I'm the water boy. But I come to you on a low level, I kind of invited myself to this deal, so I'm listening around the office, and they were going to this thing, and I said, "What are we talking about?" So I look up these articles, and I just read some of the stuff that I'm seeing there, and I'm not calling anybody, you know, I'm not here to say how smart I am or what I know, but I've been doing the geothermal, in the geothermal industry about 15 years, and like I said, I'm boots on the ground, I'm on the rigs. Since I've been with ORMAT for three years, I've had a chance to, I've been global, all over the place, I just got back from Africa from one of our projects over there a couple weeks ago. But some of the things I've read, and I've written it down, it says, "I've worked for ORMAT for over three years now and had the time to travel to many different sites locally and internationally. I've been given the opportunity to see firsthand what takes place on the drilling and exploration projects. After some of the public comments about this project, I felt compelled to come and say that I could attest that a majority of these statements, such as, "Our towns get a sink where they're jeopardizing the water supply," are not based on facts and are mostly untrue. I noticed in an article that I was reading that someone had stated that there are too many what-ifs and dangers to approve this project. I am confident that if all facts, rather than emotions and feelings, are considered, then this project will be allowed to move forward. And I thank you for your time. Have a nice day. Thank you.
Simon Webison, followed by Penny Brock.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Simon Webison. I have a funny accent, because originally I'm from New Zealand. I have moved here for geothermal development. I am the Vice President of Exploration and Resource Management at ORMAT. I lead one of the largest technical teams in geothermal globally. We are the most active, and we operate three times more geothermal fields than the next largest operator. We are good at what we do. We are proud of what we do, and we are proud of doing things the right way. Coming from New Zealand, I have had an opportunity to work in other regulatory environments. I also work across Kenya, Guatemala, Guadalupe, Honduras, and Indonesia. I get to see the truly global view of geothermal resources, development approaches, regulations, and outcomes. What we do is world-class. The science and the rigor that we do is best practice. Geothermal resources are not dependent on weather, like other renewable energy sources are. Therefore, it's important for us to reflect that if we do not develop geothermal for administrative purposes, that we are not making the best opportunity to decarbonize our grids. Geothermal exploration is very expensive. It costs a lot of money to do good science, and that's what our team is here to do. We design, in a very scientific approach, our exploration and development strategies. We design the wells and drilling practices using world-class approaches to ensure that we protect the local environment and the community in which we operate. ORMAT has a strong track record on this, and we bring our global expertise to continually improve our procedures, our processes, to keep us world-class. This is what attracts people to come work at ORMAT, like I have come. It is because it has such a strong reputation for doing this right. So I am proud to lead ORMAT's world-class team of scientists and engineers, and I'm more than confident in our ability to explore, and if we have success in exploration, to then move to the next stage of development, and then on to operations, creating jobs, and also business for other businesses that support us. We are going to do this in a world-class way. We have already done it in a world-class way. We have done good science and good permitting process with good community engagement, and we will continue to do that. I ask you to consider the implications... I ask you to consider the implications of land use decisions that go against the objectives of developing new renewable energy in the U.S., in Nevada, and in this county. Thank you very much.
Penny Brock followed by Janet Butcher.
It seems like we all were just here yesterday, right after that long meeting last week. I'm Penny Brock. I ask that my remarks and handouts be entered into the public record. One of the documents I am going to provide, I found on Operation Sunlight yesterday regarding the Elections Group. The recent hiring of the Elections Group in Washoe County has raised serious and ongoing concerns about the integrity of our elections in Washoe County. Despite numerous red flags and connections to controversial figures like George Soros, this group was brought in from out of state without a vote initially by the Board, and the County Manager Eric Brown claimed to have thoroughly vetted him. However, a simple web search reveals numerous issues with the Elections Group, including the fact that their founder, Chris Piper, and so on, was fired from, for example, Chris Piper was fired from his ethics post in Virginia after some legislators claimed they thought he was an attorney, when in fact he was not. Piper was also fired as head of the Virginia Elections Commission in 2022. Further, the Elections Group was present during the controversial 2020 election in Georgia and heavily criticized, they heavily criticized the election audit in Arizona. It is clear that the presence of this group in our election raises concerns about the integrity of the process, with ties to controversial figures and a history of questionable practices. It is difficult to trust that our vote will be counted fairly and accurately. It is imperative that the Board takes action to cancel the contract with this group and restore faith in our election process. The stakes are too high to allow this group to continue to operate in our election process and our elections moving forward. This group has connections to Soros, Odomeyer, and other shady progressive organizations, which raises serious concerns about their motives and objectives in our local election. Their involvement in the 2020 election sham in other states, and their criticism of the audit in Arizona should raise red flags for anyone who values the integrity of a fair and honest election process in our county. Furthermore, the fact that Washoe County Manager Eric Brown hired this group by January of '23 without a vote of the County Commissioners, and then pushed for their approval at the March 28th and the April 11th meeting, raises questions about his honesty and integrity. Did he intentionally mislead the Board about the group's background and connections? Why did he hide from the Commission that he had hired this group? Was he influenced by outside forces now with their own agenda? These are important questions that must be answered. It is clear that the Elections Group is not a trustworthy organization and should not be allowed to oversee our elections and public records.
Janet Butcher followed by Sayamara Graves.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the records. Please note, I am not representing any club or any organization. I stand before you as a 30-year resident of Washoe County and a constituent of District Four. I want to thank Manager Brown for reading the email I sent last evening. He was up and at it early this morning. I hope he read the attachment. I am entering the attachment again into the records. If any Commissioner reviewed it since I saw who did read, I thank you also. I put together the little thing that I keep sending you guys, and nobody ever responds to me, very quickly. So it's not even a professional document. I could do a professional one, and I could do it for a lot less than $600,000. Manager Brown said that he discussed with various members of the Board, Commissioner Hill among them, which other members did he discuss this with? Manager Brown said he reached out to NACO, International City and County and Managers Association, and the Voting Center in Clark County, and the Secretary of State's Office. Manager Brown invited proposals from only two firms and stated that they were scored. What was the criteria for the scoring, and can he share the scoring results in the same, in the name of transparency? I'm curious if Manager Brown made any inquiries with city and county managers of those counties who did not have the overwhelming issues Washoe experienced. Commissioner Andriola commented that she felt an independent committee is a good idea. The Elections Group, while they may be external to the county and the citizens, which might classify them as independent from Washoe County itself, they are not a bi- or tri-partisan group. I ask, were there not any nonpartisan election groups that could be found? This is not rocket science. Commissioner Clark commented that the ROV could take lessons from the Treasurer and Assessor Office, basically its content management. If the voter rolls are good, it fixes a lot of the problems. Responsible proofreading would reduce ballot errors. The $600,000 could be used to hire more poll workers, as there were not enough of them. Volunteers, Manager Brown took issue with the volunteers, yet, I'm going to run out of time. He said it was a very dangerous thing, yet on the county website it states the following: Volunteer, help walk animals, support libraries, care, and advocate.
Sayamara Graves followed by Natalie Nicole.
I'm Sayamara Graves with Kemfer Kroll, and I'm here today on behalf of my colleague, Sev Carlson, who is traveling for work. We represent Burning Man Project. We're here to address potential reconsideration of last week's decision by the Commissioners to deny the administrative permit for the proposed geothermal drilling project in Gerlach. We want to ask, what has changed in the one single week since this body denied Ormat's administrative permit that was granted by the Board of Adjustment with inadequate notice and without any public involvement or scrutiny by the residents of Gerlach? The same thing is happening today. Reconsideration of last week's decision appears to be political expediency, rather than to correct any error from one week ago, as no error was made. And if Ormat believes an error was made, they have a right to judicial review. Ormat could also proceed with a special use permit application for its entire exploration project, but has chosen a path to circumvent the county's requirement and public input, quite similar to the same corporation segmenting its project and undermining the federal process, as well as the intent of the National Environmental Policy Act, resulting in an inadequate environmental assessment, rather than the indicated and more robust environmental impact statement. The Commission got it right last week and should not revisit their decision. Thank you.
Natalie Nicole followed by Pam Dar.
My name is Natalie Nicole, and I am in-house counsel for Burning Man Project, based in our Reno office. It's interesting to see Ormat and its representatives show up here today with such force at the moment the Gerlach community isn't present and no item is on the agenda. In addition to the fact that there is no substantive reason for the Commission to reconsider the decision that was made last week, reconsideration is also procedurally improper. The open meeting law prohibits action on reconsideration today because it is not on today's agenda. The residents of Gerlach, who committed so much time and effort to participate in last week's meeting, have not had any notice that this matter may be reconsidered. No opportunity to provide comment or understand why the Commission may change its mind about their concerns. Reconsideration is also barred at a future meeting by the Commission's bylaws. A motion for reconsideration cannot proceed in future meetings because the bylaws only allow for reconsideration today, the next regularly scheduled meeting following last week's decision. But the open meeting law does not allow the Commission to take action on that today because it was not noticed. There is no process for reconsideration at future meetings outside of this established timeline. As you have heard, Ormat has multiple options for recourse should it disagree with the Commission's decisions last week. However, reconsideration is not an appropriate path, given the requirements of the open meeting law and the Commission's own bylaws. Thank you.
Pam Dar followed by Bruce Foster.
My name is Pam Dar. It's nice to meet everybody. I've never been up here before, so it's a first. I'm a precinct captain in 6411 in District Four, and I want to welcome the new Commissioner and offer to meet with her. I'll send my information and share with her what I've had expressed to me from neighbors and people I've talked to in my community. So I think it's a great opportunity, so I want to open that for her. I also go into other precincts in her district, and it would be great, because 2024 is going to be here before she knows it, and she can share that with this Commission board, because we live in a wonderful community. There's all kinds of opinions out there, and I like going face-to-face with people and asking them where they're at, share with them what I gather when I go to meetings, so that they are abreast on who's running, what's being offered, what's being done. And I'm all over the place, so I share that with them. And just want to say hi and welcome, and thank everybody for paying attention. I've been sitting back there, and I've gone to meetings, and sometimes it doesn't feel like you're listening. Everybody's been listening. Thank you. And I'm not too sure about, real quick, I have my concerns about 8.C.1. I'm not 100% sold on if that's a good decision to do. My concerns on how they were hired, without it really going through the Board first, my brother was a Commissioner, and there's concerns about that, which I think are genuine. So I think people need that comfort when it comes to elections and the process, that everything's above Board, and any concerns and issues they have are dealt with. To make sure, we live together in this community. Let's make it a great place. Thank you.
Bruce Foster followed by Laura Jacobson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Bruce Foster. For the record, I'm a Washoe County resident for over 40 years. Between my wife and I, we have six children, thankfully they're all out of diapers, and close to nine grandchildren. And of course, I wish to, you know, welcome Commissioner Andriola, as she is now my Commissioner in District Four. I am also co-captain, along with Pam Dar, in precinct 6411, and we worked our butts off, walking the neighborhoods and getting some, a lot of information about the direction of our country and such, a lot of discussions on that. And also participated as a poll watcher, and certainly took a look at some improprieties that we encountered through the process of both primary and the main election. And certainly, we want to encourage all of you to really take a deep dive and really do our due diligence in looking at election integrity. And I want to thank Robert Beatles and his crew, that they are doing their homework and presenting it to you. And then all the other issues that are abounding with this Commission, whether it's the homeless issue, or the other one that I've been emailing this Commission for the last several years is the issue of medical tyranny, and that is the plandemic that was forced upon us back in 2020. And for myself, I got the China virus, my mom got the China virus, and thankfully, the availability of ivermectin helped myself, and the availability of monoclonals helped my mother. Boom. And I continue to see that on the Washoe County Health website, still encouraging getting the clot shot. And I know so many individuals and friends that have had adverse effects, and as well as there's been deaths that are, we believe that has been related to the Moderna or the Pfizer shot. So we'll continue, and I will continue emailing, to shut down this opportunity for people to get the C19, the shot, and we wish to shut that down once and for all. Thank you.
Laura Jacobson followed by Nicholas St. John.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your consideration today. My name is Laura Jacobson, and I am Senior In-House Legal Counsel for Ormat, where I oversee our company's U.S. operations. I don't have much to add legally, I defer to your April staff and the District Attorney on that. What I want to share today is my personal perspective. Two years ago, I was a young partner at McDonald Carano. I was a litigation partner, and I was co-chair of my firm's employment practice group. I fully intended to spend my career there, I was very happy. But when the opportunity to join Ormat arose, I found it was an opportunity I couldn't resist. I couldn't resist the opportunity to join a world-class, publicly-traded, global renewable energy company, which is right here in my backyard, in Reno, Nevada, where I grew up. I couldn't resist the opportunity to join the fight against climate change, which I care very deeply about as a mother of two very young children. It is my sincere pleasure, in my role at Ormat, to support the departments you've heard from today, 1,400 employees globally, about half in the U.S., about half of those in Nevada. You heard today that the environmental assessment conducted by the BLM was inadequate. Respectfully, of course, I disagree. That is not before you today. That is before federal court, where Burning Man has instituted litigation to overturn the BLM's approval of this project. That will be decided by a federal judge. Something interesting I learned about the environmental assessment process working at Ormat is if we were an oil and gas company, we would enjoy what is called a categorical exemption under NEPA. Now, I don't say that to lobby for a change there, that's something for the United States Congress to take up, but I just want to add perspective to the two years of extensive permitting and studies that were conducted in support of this project. I don't know why Burning Man opposes this project. Maybe they've shared that with you. I would be sincerely interested to find out. I can only speculate, and I can only speculate because Burning Man's own sustainability report touts geothermal, solar, and wind development as a way to sustain our future. I sympathize with what happened last week. I sympathize with the decisions you have to make. You were presented with a parade of horribles that are, in my view, are not based in fact, and even at their face relate to a plant development, which is not before you, which would undergo further development. The good news is you don't have to choose between geothermal development and Burning Man. Our reviews have shown that. We can have both. Thank you.
Nicholas St. John followed by Garrett Gordon, and I do have a document to distribute.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nicholas St. John, for the record. I handed that out because a lot of times, as we, the people, are not, although we communicate with you, we're not convincing you guys actually get our documents, and so that's why I wanted to print that out and make sure that you had a copy of it in front of you. I have a number of issues here. First, I want to thank Jeanne Herman and Mike Clark. Your representation of us has been stellar, and we appreciate the feedback that we get from you. Next, I demand that you have a removal of the metal detector. I've come in here a number of times, there is nothing that you guys can come up with a policy that can override the Fourth Amendment. So I demand that you remove this metal detector and give us back our rights. Next, we'd like to put on the, have you put on the agenda, and I'm hoping that this will appeal to our new, latest Commissioner, on the agenda, a Second Amendment Sanctuary County Resolution. agenda, a Second Amendment sanctuary county resolution. If you want help with that, you can reach out to me. My number is always on all the cards I turn in. And there are eleven, at least eleven other counties that have already passed a Second Amendment sanctuary county resolution. Next, we, I keep asking about town halls. We'd like to have you guys set up, I don't know if it's a policy or a resolution, that you meet at least two or three, maybe four times a year with your constituents, where there's a town hall where we can actually have dialogue. This system where you give us three lousy minutes to present our case to you, I'm sure Nate Edwards, when he's in court, if they limited him to three minutes, he would not be able to present his case. So we need a situation where we can actually have a dialogue with you. I've been asking for this for well over a year. We want to see you guys take action. Give us something where we can actually have a dialogue, where we know where you stand and actually get some dialogue so we can work through some of these issues. Now, in relation to the elections group, we've asked that you form a Citizens Action Board, a CAB, for election integrity. They're going to interview a bunch of us. Those of us that are going to be interviewing, we could form the CAB. We can give you way better information because we live here. We live this. We've been investigating it. I've written a number of reports, which you got last week and other times I've been here. So please form a CAB for the Election Integrity Project. Alexis, as far as clapping, that's already gone through the second, gone through the Supreme Court. Clapping is a First Amendment right. You can give us three to five seconds. It's not going to destroy your business meeting. And so I'm going to ask you for, that you would stop trying to force control on us and give us three to five seconds to clap for somebody that we appreciate. And finally, you guys have the email for.
Garrett Gordon, followed by Matt Graves.
Good morning. For the record, Garrett Gordon, partner at Lewis and Rocha, today representing ORMAT. Just want to say thank you for hearing us today. We know you have a long agenda, and we appreciate you hearing from the experts from ORMAT and really give a different narrative of what happened last week. I emailed you, all of you, the BLM decision of record. Hopefully, you all received and had a chance to look at it. As you heard today, there was so much time, effort, and resources put into this document. For example, on page two, there was alternatives. There wasn't a request by ORMAT to say, here's our plan, here's our alternative, yes or no. We sent four alternatives to BLM. They analyzed each and every one and determined that alternative two was most appropriate because it minimized vegetation disturbance, potential for soil erosion, and again, minimized access points. Again, the experts, the science focused on it. Two, you heard a minute ago, well, why reconsider? What has changed? I would say what has changed from, hopefully you heard today, is the narrative that there was no public outreach or no public involvement. Page ten of the EA talks about in two thousand twenty, there is a pre-scoping period. In two thousand twenty-one, another thirty-day scoping period. Who participated? Burning Man, private citizens. As I turn the page to page eleven, BLM released their draft EA. Who did they get comments from? Burning Man, private citizens. When the document was actually published, the draft EA, who was able to comment on it and who did comment on it? You can see on page eleven, Burning Man and private citizens. And what was done with that input? On page twelve, changes were made to the EA. Additional water monitoring was added. Additional other mitigations were added. Burning Man and the residents were heard in regards to the changes that were made and this process. But as we know from last week and hearing from Gerlach residents and from Burning Man, there's some more work to do. And I commit to you, if you can reconsider this item, which wouldn't happen today, it would be put on an agenda, next agenda, which would be publicly noticed, and Gerlach residents could show up and certainly make their statements. But we need more time. I commit to you on behalf of ORMAT, that if you give us more time in this reconsideration, we will sit down with the residents of Gerlach, your constituents, Commissioner Herman, and with Burning Man, and think we could go a little farther to meet in the middle. For example, ORMAT's saying maybe we can reduce the number of wells. Maybe we won't drill at night, which will limit lights and limit noise. Maybe on the record, we'll commit to an EIS document if and when a resource is found and if and when a geothermal power plant is approved. So I requestfully ask that you reconsider this item. I commit to you on behalf of myself and ORMAT that we'll do our best to find the middle ground.
Matt Graves, followed by Michael Rodriguez.
Good morning. My name is Matt Graves. I am the vice president of Operations for Donor Net Request. We are the federally designated organ procurement organization for Northern Nevada. And April is National Donate Life Month, which aims to bring awareness to this incredibly important mission of organ eye and tissue donation. I want to thank you, commission, for your, and this entire community, for your continued partnership and support for our mission to save and heal lives. Donor Net Request was delighted to kick off Donate Life Month this year with lighting the city of Reno by, with the Reno Arch green and blue, and recognize our healthcare partner champions, as well as some donor family heroes in a lighting ceremony. As you know, there are over six hundred Nevadans waiting on life-saving organ transplant, and it is through the support of this community and that they are given hope and that their lives will be saved and improved. Together, we can end the wait for all Nevadans, but we need this community's support in registering to be an organ eye and tissue donor and to talk to your families about that. Again, thank you for this commission's support, and we look forward to working with you in the future.
Michael Rodriguez, followed by Nathan Garner, and I do have documents to be distributed for Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Good morning. Michael Rodriguez, Golden Valley resident. I almost feel out of place. I was encouraged to bring forth some research that I did for the Golden Valley Property Owners' Association before I became a member. Between the bookends, A Short History of the Golden Valley Aquifer Recharge Program. I updated it just last night. Before nineteen eighty-nine, the Golden Valley area issues were declining groundwater and rising nitrate levels for many domestic wells within the Golden Valley area. At that time, the bookends were for just over five hundred residential property owners. One of the bookends was do nothing and wait on Mother Nature to do her thing. The studies and reports being what they were, Golden Valley residents were faced with continuing deterioration in water quality due to septic recharge and the need to deepen existing wells. If that weren't enough, individual residents could receive notice from the Department of Health to rescind their certificate of occupancy due to an unhealthy domestic well. There's a note there. You can get to it later. The other bookend, the community was made aware the State of Nevada Division of Water Resources could red-flag our valley and impose a special assessment district for municipal water and sewer infrastructure throughout the Golden Valley. To sum up, the SAD fee would be equally shared by the number of Golden Valley property owners, plus the cost per individual property owner for a water meter, water and sewer hookups, property excavation to their home, water and sewer pipes to their home, anti-siphon and anti-backflow devices, sealing one's domestic well, decommissioning one's septic system, and all required permits therein. The solution for, between those bookends became the Golden Valley Aquifer Groundwater Recharge Program. Washoe County and the Bureau of Reclamation implemented a federally funded artificial recharge pilot project by injecting fresh water into the Golden Valley from nineteen eighty-nine through nineteen ninety-eight. And I'll stop there. I'll reconvene at your next public comment. Thank you.
Nathan Garner, followed by Renee Rosentus.
Good morning. My name is Nathan Garner. I'm the Environmental Compliance Manager for ORMAT. I'm deeply involved in all compliance activities throughout the company. I started with ORMAT as a plant operator, and I learned with boots on the ground how ORMAT functions and who they are as a company. They care about communities and what happens in and around them. My choice to work in environmental compliance was because of this. We are leaders in the geothermal power industry regarding environmental compliance, reporting, and transparency. I am proud of our work as a company in communities across Nevada and other states and countries. I'm concerned over the recent permit denial, and I request that the decision to move this project forward is approved. Thank you.
Renee Rosentus, followed by Tonya Pletzer.
Hello, Renee Rosentus. Please put my comments into the record. I don't have a lot more to add. I stand with the comments from Penny Brock and Jenna Butcher. I do want to add that I've been really bothered in our county by all of the appointments for, to fill the seats that become empty because they, the previous commissioner or county worker, city worker decides to resign, retire early, which opens up the opportunity for our next person who's not elected is now appointed. This is what they do in third-world countries to take control of the country and the people. This is tyranny, and I have watched it in Reno Council. I've watched it in school board and on this committee also. And this needs to stop. This is tyranny. It's taken away our voice and our vote for who we want to represent the people. These people that are appointed are not representing me because I didn't appoint them. So they represent the people who appointed them, and they're not doing the people's service in our community. Also, on the elections group, I would like you to investigate that further. I asked you last week. I'm asking you again. There is a lot of other entities. One of them is Influence Watch with a lot of information, and you really should read what they have to say, and very left leaning and not representing all of the constituents here in Washoe County or in our state. So if you have not done that, I encourage you to do that. This is really important for us. Our elections have been filled with controversy. And is this elections group going to deny poll watchers from fulfilling their role in the upcoming election? Are they going to, are they going to fulfill that role themselves? We saw a lot, and as you know, I, I'm done.
Tonya Pletzer.
Hello, commissioners. I'm here on behalf of our residents. Jeanne Herman is our representative, and we were encouraged to come talk to you about an issue we're having with waste management. I live in an area, rural area, called Rancho Haven, and for the past two weeks, my trash has not been delivered. Many more residents trashes. It's been eight misses in eleven weeks. We've been lied to by waste management. Every time you call, you get a different answer. Your roads are muddy. Lie. Now they're saying there's too many bumps on our road, but they went down the worst road there is and then skipped all the rest of us. They offered us a trash dumpster, which is great. However, you have to go three miles to the nearest fire station, and it's so full because they don't empty it that the fire station is not going to let us use that trash receptacle on their property any longer because it's not being filled. Waste management also wants residents, it's been suggested that we bring our trash to Red Rock Road. Well, some of us live a quarter mile, two, two miles from Red Rock Road. Myself, with injuries for back and neck, I cannot do that. That's impossible. A lot of our residents are older. That's not feasible. My issue, I'm pleading with you today to the commissioners, is please help us. Waste management has a contract with the county, so while the residents can choose another trash company, we are still required to use waste management. This has allowed waste management to monopolize and mistreat the very residents that they are supposed to be serving. When you call, recently, we actually did get a credit, but before, you don't get a credit either. They're like, oh, well, too bad. Sorry, we'll pick you up next week. So this week, and then they don't tell you. They email you, oh, we're on our way. We're coming. They never showed up. So this week, I have to drag my trash cans out again, hoping and pleading that they will actually take my trash out. Maybe the county can have a shorter contract with waste management and allow the ability for each resident to supply their own choice of a provider to promote competition. I really am pleading with you guys. We are residents, we are four hundred residents, and we need some help. I really, oh, I don't know if I said, I'd like my comments to go to the record. Sorry. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate you.
Mr. Manager, can we have a staff person talk to Ms. Pletzer? Madam Clerk.
That's everybody who is signed in in chambers, but I do have an email to be placed on the record.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, will you lead us into item four?
Item four is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, and topics for future agendas.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, do you have any comments for us?
Thank you. No, I don't this morning.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In response to all you great people from ORMAT, I, I think you're all right. You are right. ORMAT does normally do a wonderful job in every way, except this time the people weren't informed properly, and that's the only complaint that I have as their representative. So I just want you to know Scott can tell you, Scott Nichols can tell you that I have worked with him in the past and I've always supported, even before I was a commissioner. So yes, you guys are on the right track. You can go back to work, and we appreciate your representation here. I think it's great. The company's well represented, but the people of Gerlach need a little better representative, representation. So I think that's where our problem lies. So that's my answer to you, and we'll keep on working on it. Thank you very much. Other items, I'm sorry that I have a few here because.
That's fine. This is your time.
Because last time our meeting went a little long, and I was holding them off till the end. So most of them are people's comments and requests from the citizens in my district. And a lot of them have been asking me, what is the ROV hiding? And it's regarding the blackout of the ROV's office. So I'd sure like an answer for that, too. So Mr. Newman, Mark Newman, who represents the people on the senior board and the GID for Sun Valley, or not the GID, yeah, he's on the GID as well, right. And also, he's on the CAB and a great representative. And I put him there. So anyhow, so he's wondering, and like I was wondering at the, when they originally did the flood district for Spanish Springs, Highland Branches was included in it, and I questioned it at the time, and now he's questioning it as well because the people in Highlands are having a hard time understanding why they have to pay their monthly fee, and they aren't really in Spanish Springs. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I hope I can get an answer for him. So there's quite a few questions that I've had from people that they're requesting an independent audit of our two thousand twenty-two election to help gain trust of the voters for our coming twenty twenty-four election. It's going to happen pretty soon. It's going to happen pretty soon. So that's another item that I'd like to discuss with the county manager and others, whoever can give me information on that. Okay, there's a... I do support a citizens audit of the ROV as well, just for transparency's sake. There were probably hundreds and hundreds of calls over the last many years since we -- probably six, seven years since the waste management original contract was approved. And so, like I say, hundreds, I've had hundreds of calls. And this has been over a long period of time, and it hasn't lessened. It has grown exponentially. So we really need to do something with that, and I think that we're just starting to get some traction on that right now. So in fact, I'm supposed to get some news on that this afternoon. And that, I think, I think I've taken my time.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to speak to an issue that came up first here, Richard Homa. He's a citizen in District Two, my district. He's brought this to my attention. I've been working with him for some time. Here's a situation where he's the fourth or fifth owner of a property. Four or five owners ago, people built, made improvements onto the property. Over the course of time, the assessors picked up those improvements and valued them. Over the course of time, the treasurer's office has picked up the assessor's recommendations and valued the property and billed the property owners prior to Mr. Homa buying the property. So, you know, it's almost ironic that the county will value and charge a tax on a property that doesn't have a permit. And yet, when this man wants to build a property, build on his property, make an improvement on his property, and tries to get a permit, the county blocks him from doing this. He's trying to play by the rules. He's a holder in due course. He bought this property in good faith. The county, in my opinion, dropped the ball when they valued the property, when they taxed the property, and yet they didn't take the time and energy to find out if it was permitted. I think in the future, and I'm talking to the commissioners here now, I'm not talking to the room, I think that we need to figure out a way to make sure that these county departments work in concert with each other. So if somebody discovers something, and somebody values it, and somebody taxes it, let's make sure it's got a permit on it. Because in the scheme of things, he's trying to further improve his property, which, think about this, will be new construction. Think about this, this will add extra tax dollars coming to the county, and he can't do that. He's bought this building, he's set it on the ground. We've had the worst winter we've had in, you know, 75, 80 years here. The building is getting rusty. He can't do what he wants. He's being held up, and the county, you know, the county makes the citizens jump through hoops that they won't jump through. And I bring up the CARES campus. You know, the CARES campus was built by the city of Reno. We took it over. They put 100 -- excuse me, 1,000 people approximately there without a sewer line in. Who in their right mind would build a building to house humans without a sewer line there? So let's hold the county and the rest of government to the same standards we're trying to hold this poor citizen. He's playing by the rules, and he can't get anything done. He's been penalized. I don't know how long he's had it. He's probably had the building for maybe a year laying on the ground there. He can't build this building because somebody in the county didn't do their job, and now we're going to take it out on this guy. It's 500,000 people versus this man. This is not right. Okay, so that's enough of that. You get my idea. And I hope the Ormat folks are listening to me as well, because I stick up for the citizens. Everybody that spoke with Ormat today, Matt Henrich, can't pronounce her name exactly, Rai Pooja Shivan, Paul Thompson, Scott Nichols, Josh Norquist, Candace Payette, John Tuttle, Jason Ritchie, Simon Webison, Robin Zouza, Charlie Speary, John, I can't pronounce his last name, Akerly, Erica Fries, Kerry Rohimer. I mean, all of these folks are subject matter experts. I don't have an argument with you at all. Just because I got elected doesn't mean I'm a subject matter expert about what you do. But I am a subject matter expert on taking care of the citizens. I don't know what happened here last week, but I'll tell you this, the folks showed up, and they didn't want it in their backyard. And if it happened in your backyard and you came to me, I'd support you as well. That's what took place here last week. So there's about 15 or 16 of you that spoke, maybe more. There's about 150 people in Gerlach. I recommend that you, subject matter experts, visit with these folks and convince them of the facts. The county commission shouldn't have to be your salesperson to do this. These folks need your subject matter expertise to show them that this is the right thing to do. I'm not opposed to energy, this type of renewable energy. When I met with Garrett Gordon, my first question when anybody comes to me is, who's against this? And he says virtually nobody. Nobody showed up at the last hearing. When I met with the Burning Man representatives, they were lukewarm about even being against this. I walked into this meeting last week thinking this was a slam dunk, that I was going to vote for this until the citizens showed up. When the citizens showed up, I've got to stick up for the citizens. That's what the job of a county commissioner is, to act as a buffer between big government and the citizens. I'm trying to do that. I defer to the commissioner whose district that is in. These people can't vote for me. I wasn't pandering to them for a vote. I'm supporting a commissioner, and I was supporting the people. If you check my track record, I stuck up when I was assessor, I stuck up for the people up at Incline Village, 8,000 people up there, who were overcharged by the assessor's office. The county didn't want to do a doggone thing to help them. These people hated the assessor's office. I made it my business to go up and sell them on the idea that we were going to treat them fairly, and sell them on, me and my staff, we're going to treat them fairly, and we were there to protect their interests. And I stood up against the county. And believe me, I got beat up by a lot of people who sat on this dais because I took the time to stick up for the citizens. So I think, you know, I'm supportive of what you're trying to do. I'm not arguing with you, but you have to convince the people who live there that this is a good idea. I don't like to see things jammed down people's throats. You know, I stuck up for the people in Lemon Valley. When the city of Reno's sewer capacity is overcapacity, the people can't go out and use their own yards in Lemon Valley, many of the areas in Lemon Valley, because the city of Reno's sewer capacity is over what it should be. As the assessor, I stuck up for the people, and I devalued 3,300 homes there because of smell from sewers. So I'm the guy up here on the dais who believes in full transparency, and I'm going to stick up for the people, and that's just the way I'm going to vote. So again, I'm not against Ormat. I think it's a great idea. I thought their presentation from who I talked to, Burning Man, was lukewarm on even being -- they said, we almost feel silly speaking out against this based on our position as Burning Man, and we like to support renewable energy and that type of thing. So I'm on your side, but the people aren't. There's enough of you here, if you each take five or six people from Gerlach and get to know them and explain your position and convince them that it's going to be good for everybody, convince the people. You're trying to convince five commissioners, none of us live there. To Mr. Gordon's point, he said he wants to work with these folks, hold some town hall meetings, have a host of barbecue, do something out there with these folks, and figure out exactly how you, as subject matter experts, can convince them that this is a good idea. And lastly, I've got to call out one other comment here from Laura Jacobson. I'm not quite sure what she meant by parade of horribles. What the heck is that? Is that like deplorables but horribles? I mean, was she calling out these folks out there because they came in and spoke about they didn't want this in their backyard? I'm sure if I took a poll of anybody in the county, nobody would want a dairy next door. Nobody really wants to be next to the airport. Nobody really wants to have, you know, a rock crushing plant next to them, or a recycling plant next to them, whatever. So understand, these folks live there. We don't. And if they're unhappy with it, it's up to you to convince them that this is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Not seeing any. I just have a few items. I had an opportunity to go to the Washoe County Leadership Graduation with Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Andriola. It was a really cool event, and I know that we're starting the next class in September, so I'm just asking the community to look out for those applications, so you can apply to be part of that class. If you speak to any folks who were part of it, they'll tell you it was a really great experience. I also had an opportunity to go to the Northern Nevada Literacy Council graduation. They graduated 13 adult learners ages 16 and older who completed their programs and achieved a high school equivalency certificate. And this commission funded eight of those adult learners as part of our grants through the ARPA funds. And it was so incredible to see these folks and their family members, and some of these folks as well were through the Eddie House, and so the Eddie House was there to support them. And there were a lot of -- there was a lot of diversity in that audience, and so it was touching, and I just wanted to make sure this board understood the impact of those grants to our community. And so the one thing I will ask is that we will take a few items out of order because we've had a lot of public comment, and we have some proclamations. So I'd like to move item six ahead of item five, and Commissioner Andriola, I think, is going to present 6A1. Mr. Manager, will you please lead us into that?
Item 6A1 is proclamation to proclaim the month of April 2023 as Donate Life Month.
And I think we have folks here from Nevada Donor Network, the Donor Network West, and Dr. Laura Knight, our medical examiner.
Thank you, Chair Hill and commissioners and county manager. I'd like to go ahead and read proclamation. Whereas National Donate Life Month is an opportunity to educate citizens about organ, eye, and tissue donation, and is a time to offer appreciation to the donors and their families who inspire our communities with their priceless gifts. And whereas, more than 600 Nevadans are currently on the national organ transplant waitlist, with an average of 22 people dying each day in the United States due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas, organ procurement and awareness organizations across Washoe County and the silver state known collectively as Donate Life Nevada work in close partnership with families, doctors, nurses, and medical examiners to connect heroic donors with recipients. And whereas, the spirit of giving and the decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition, with most religious and cultures in support of donation. And whereas, becoming a registered donor has never been easier. As Nevadans can register when applying for or renewing their driver's license by going online or by scanning the Donate Life QR code on printed materials found throughout the Washoe County Administration complex during the month of April. And whereas, with a national organ transplant waitlist growing daily, yet the opportunity to save as many as eight lives with the gift of organ donation, and to heal dozens more with the gift of tissue, the importance of the decision to say yes to donation has never been greater. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 2023 as National Donate Life Month. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Please come up if you have anything to say.
Thank you so much, Chair Hill and Vice Chair Herman and commissioners, for the opportunity to highlight organ and tissue donation before you again this year. It is such an important issue in Washoe County and Nevada. I'm Dr. Laura Knight from the Washoe County Regional Medical Examiner's Office, and our office collaborates very closely with organ and tissue donation. Before our innovative program in 2017, there was not an opportunity to donate if you died at home, or if you died outside of the hospital setting. And so our partnership with tissue donation has really allowed that to blossom in our community. We've literally referred thousands of people who would not have had the opportunity otherwise to donate, and there have been hundreds of donations because of those referrals that have impacted thousands of recipients. So in the medical examiner and coroner world, we don't have the opportunity to give a lot of good news. So this is really special for us and very important to my staff, and very important to the citizens of Washoe County. So we appreciate your involvement in highlighting this. And my colleagues from some of our local organ and tissue procurement organizations want to say a few words, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knight, for your wonderful work.
Good morning, good afternoon. My name is Monica Miles, for the record. I'm the Community Development Manager for Nevada Donor Network. I'm here with my colleague Kimberly Flores, and we're here representing Nevada Donor Network, our entire team. And I want to thank the commission, Dr. Knight, her entire team, but really multiple departments throughout the county for their support this month and helping us raise awareness for organ and tissue donation. It really is this kind of widespread support that helps us create pro-donation communities. It helps inspire more Nevadans to make that heroic decision to register, and ultimately it helps us save more lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
And I was able to make public comments earlier, but again, thank you for your support. This means an incredible amount to our mission, and we can't do more, we can't say enough about this community in terms of its support for our mission, and it inspires more to donate. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work, and looking forward to supporting you in the future. Okay, we will now go to item 6B1. And I'm sorry, Vice Chair Herman will read this, and Mr. Manager, sorry about that.
It's all right. 6B1 is proclaim the week of April 9th through to 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week.
Thank you. And I think we have the sheriff here and his executive staff, as well as our dispatchers, our incredible dispatchers.
Board of County Commissioners proclamation. Whereas, behind every emergency response that takes place in Washoe County, there is a team of dedicated professional communication specialists who are often the first and most vital link between our citizens and emergency services. And whereas, Washoe County communication specialists are the lifeblood of information for more than 500 public safety personnel 24 hours a day, seven days a week, providing a critical safety service to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Reno Sparks Indian Colony Police Department, Pyramid Lake Tribal Police, Pyramid Lake Fire Rescue EMS, United States Department of Veteran Affairs Police, and the Washoe County Department of Alternate Sentencing and Backup Services, RMSA Health, and After Hour Services. and Backup Services, RMSA Health, and after-hours services for the Washoe County School District Police Department. And whereas the 24 communications specialists, one communication call taker, five supervisors, one center manager who serves as at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Dispatch Center have exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during more than 150,000 calls for service each year, covering an area of approximately 6,700 square miles with over 114,000 residences. And whereas every Washoe County Communication Specialist is certified by the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch and Emergency Medical Dispatch, Emergency Police Dispatch, and Emergency Fire Dispatch, and EDQ Qual, so that they may provide a substantial contribution to the treatment of medical patients, apprehension of criminals, and the suppression of fires throughout Washoe County. And whereas we honor our county's less visible but vitally important first responders, the dedicated and professional communication specialists who are always ready to serve in the interests of public safety, no matter how difficult or stressful the circumstances. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, dated this 18th day of April 2023, and signed by our Chair Alexis Hill.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Let's hear from these incredible heroes.
Commissioner Chair Hill, thank you, and fellow Commissioners. Real quick, I think the proclamation hits it, our unseen heroes. These are them, all the individuals up there, all the calm voice on the other end of the phone when you call for help, when you're in distress, and they're reassuring you as they get those first responder resources there. So thank you to the Commission for acknowledging our telecommunication specialists, and thank all of you and our manager. Jim Felter has a few words.
I want to thank you on behalf of my center and my employees. They are going to be ecstatic for being recognized for this proclamation. So thank you again. You guys are incredible for recognizing them.
Proud to support your work. Thank you so much. Mr. Manager, if you'll lead us into item seven.
Item seven is donations.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We need to go back to item five.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, my bad. And I, the clerk wants a motion on this. Do we have public comment on these?
We do.
Okay.
On item 6A1, we have Janet Butcher.
I want to thank you for honoring people who donate. I have a daughter who is a transplant patient and a recipient, and it was a young man who through the Boy Scouts signed up for donations. And so it not only helped her, but helped five other families. I just spoke to Mr. Graves because I was a little bit, her transplant patient, her transplant doctor told me that no matter what my age is, I still can be a donor, maybe a 90-year-old man might want my eyes, or so on and so forth. But my sister, twin sister, needed a kidney transplant, and I wanted to donate a kidney to her. And they wouldn't even, even check me out. And I'm pretty healthy for 75. And anyway, she passed away, but he explained to me that the donor criteria for a living donor is different for one who passes. So I thought that was really interesting, but I can't express enough how important it is for people to get on that donor list. And I appreciate you honoring that this month. Thanks.
And I see that, any more public comment, Madam Clerk?
There's none.
Okay. I see Commissioner Clark has signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I had some other items that I wanted to cover, and you know, the format kind of overwhelmed us here this morning with that. So I've got some other items that I'd like to talk about.
Can we talk about those at the end of the meeting for Commissioner comments?
Sure.
Where, I'm hoping since you're signing, could you make a motion on these two proclamations, Commissioner Clark?
Caught me off guard. I was thinking about something else. So I'll make a motion to, to
Accept the proclamations.
Accept the proclamations for both of these organizations and
Okay, and Commissioner, or Vice Chair Herman has seconded. We've already called for public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, great. And now we will go back to item five, Mr. Manager.
Item five is a recommendation to acknowledge status report and possible direction to staff on county managers' recommended fiscal year 2024 budget with estimated appropriations of approximately $1,664,108,500, which incorporates board priorities for funding of existing contractual obligations, supplies, utilities, personnel costs, third-year property tax refunds, election system, support, capital improvements, and operations maintaining the county's assets and infrastructure needs and operating requests, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commission with a tentative and final budget for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled on May 16th, 2023. And Madam Chair, with us in chambers this morning, we have our Chief Financial Officer, Abby Icobo, and our budget, oh, just Abby. Oh, there's Lori. Okay. And Lori Cook. And before she starts, I just want to remind the Commission, we've met with all of you to brief you on this budget already. This is the year we're choosing to invest in our employees. As you all know, we conducted the Corn Fairy Compensation Study, and the centerpiece really for what we would like to do in the year ahead is to focus on getting our compensation administration right. And in addition to that, we are following your guidance as far as other strategic priorities, most notably voters. There's money in this budget to address the voter registration system that needs to be replaced, as well as finishing the Incline Village property tax payments and other items. So with that, I'll turn it over to Monsieur Coben.
Thank you, Manager Brown. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Welcome to the fiscal year '24 budget process. I have the great pleasure of introducing the county's Budget Manager and Assistant County Manager, Lori Cook and Dave Solaro, for those who may not know them. And in addition, Lori's team is in the audience right, right back here. They've done an excellent job of communicating with the departments, understanding the different various requests, and working with the county manager's office to propose a carefully crafted budget that aligns your strategic goals, aligns with your strategic goals. I want to thank the departments, many of whom are here today, for their thoughtful budget submissions, flexibility, and thorough communications without the process. Without either of those two parties, we could not have presented this budget today, so thank you to all. It is critical that the managers' proposed budget align with the strategic vision many of you set during the January 2023 visioning session, off-site visioning session. You'll see Lori make those connections throughout the presentation in a moment here. As Manager Brown said, this year, due to past revenue performance and county underspending, the county manager is proposing more one-time projects than ongoing projects as those impact the five-year forecast. We're seeing large increases in required pension costs and other post-employment benefits in addition to the Corn Fairy Study and softening of C-Tax. So we'd like to let these items and revenues stabilize before expanding ongoing expenditures other than those proposed here. So they're, they're very minimal. You'll see that theme of one-time versus ongoing expenditure proposals throughout Lori's budget presentation. And so without further ado, I'll present Lori Cook and in a moment, Dave Solaro, to, to help us with the budget presentation.
Little vertically challenged. So for the record, Lori Cook, Washoe County Budget Manager. We're just going to jump right in. So it isn't just to remind the board, but also give the public information related to the strategic plan, the integration in some of those high priority initiatives that were identified back in January. Where are we current year? What are we looking like? Our '24 outlook, the, we will talk about the capital improvement plan overview, and Dave will be the emcee for, for that portion. Overview of other funds, so there are other funds, and that will be important later, and our next steps, what we have to do, what we legally have to do, and then of course, questions and, and closeout. So as a reminder, or as for the public who might not know, the execution of the vision and the strategic plan goals, we have those listed up there. So obviously, there are more initiatives, but these are the highlighted initiatives related to the execution of the strategic vision. So the regionalization of dispatch fire EMS, net zero by 2050, affordable housing in two different areas of the strategic plan equity and election systems, elections system. Where are we year-to-date? We are tracking within normal range for this part of the year. We're basically three-quarters or 75% done. These are not audited figures, so I need to put that out there. These are unaudited figures. If we look at where we were last year this time, we are a little bit closer to budget. There are two main reasons why, and it's a good thing, but those are two main outliers are the C-Tax, so the consolidated tax revenue. As we saw that coming in when we set the budget for fiscal year '22, we were in 2021. So we were conservative with that budget, and we were able to true-up that budget or that estimate for '23, so we're closer. And as well on the expenditure side, we have, we had a better understanding going into this fiscal year, how much we would have to be, have outgoing related to the Incline Village Settlement payments. And as a reminder, there's another item on the agenda today, but that total impact was estimated at $56 million and just right at $24 million for Washoe County. Well, we'll talk about the largest fund. So the largest operating fund, Washoe County, at 50% is the general fund. Basically, any function you can think of is funded within the general fund, the majority. So 84% of our, of revenues come from consolidated tax. So that is C-Tax, we'll use the acronym, and P-Tax, otherwise known as property tax, ad verum tax. We do have other smaller revenue sources within that intergovernmental, that $29 million. There's another subcomponent related to taxable sales, and that's the city or the supplemental city-county relief tax, or SCCRT. And when we include that with the other two, it's about 87% of our revenue. So close to 90% of our revenue is coming from three, three sources. So appropriations. So what is, what is in the budget? What is an appropriation? Is it an expenditure, a transfer out, or an other use? So in our case, contingency, if any is budgeted, is included in this $515 million for this general fund. Again, tying back to the initiatives, there are recommendations for the registrar of voters for the optimization related to, County Manager Brown talked about, a voting system, also positions. And we will go over specifics related to positions in a few slides, but just, you know, there can be change, there could be changes related to a review of positions or what, you know, it might not be this actual position after it goes through review. We have public safety, obviously listed in here, the district attorney, district court, the dispatch EMS consolidation, regional homelessness, and investment in capital improvement. And so with the infrastructure scorecard and the direction from the board. So these recommendations or enhancements, as it were, tie back to the strategic direction and strategic initiatives. Oftentimes, we're asked, okay, so where does, where does this funding go? Where does the money go? Well, we can see here that salaries and benefits is, is the largest component of this at 63%. That's of total uses, so that includes the transfers out. If you talk about total expenditures, which is a smaller component of uses, it's closer to 78 to 80%. And we are not out of alignment with other public service agencies. That's right about the norm. What we do is provide people and provide services. We're not, we don't, sometimes we make widgets, but we really don't make widgets. So, and then the transfers out that are supported, those are outlined later in the presentation as well. We also have questions of, okay, so what are those functions? What does that mean? And we can see that public safety is the largest funded function at 38%. The transfers out are not delineated here by function, they are at the end of the presentation. But public safety is not just the sheriff's office. And so I want to make that clear. It includes the medical examiner's office, juvenile services, the public administrator, the public guardian, countywide security, and emergency management. But the sheriff is, is our largest, but it's not the only public safety. So when we look at those uses, these are changes. We did have the Corn Fairy Study, which came to the board in February. The courts went through a similar salary study, so we've had to incorporate those. We've had in OPEB, other post-employment benefits per the actuarially determined contribution. That is an increase, the PERS requirement. So the PERS rates did go up on regular, for, on, for regular employees from 29.75%, it will be at 33.5%. And public safety from 44% to 50%. So for every dollar per compensable payment, there is 50 cents or 33 and a half cents that goes to PERS. The county does not set that PERS rate, it's set by the PERS board, and we are required to contribute to that. So it's, it's not an option for us to pay PERS public employee retirement system. And then the additional positions that are in the recommended budget. Transfers out, they're just in largest number to smallest number. And capital projects, so that's the capital infrastructure, so we transfer the capital, the capital improvement fund. There are one-time, those are outlined later in the presentation. The indigent fund, and that's a transfer to the indigent fund, the homelessness fund, the health district, the debt service fund, this is to support our debt service. All debt issued is approved by the board. This is for our governmental geo-revenue bonds, C-Tax-backed debt, the senior services fund, and the roads fund, which also has one-time. And we'll talk a little bit more later where the other revenue sources are for those funds. So that transfer you see to senior services is not the only funding senior services has. They have their own property tax rate. These are the individual positions as outlined by the departments and the functions, the different functional areas. You can see they are in alignment with this a couple slides ago. These actual, and this is where I need to give a disclaimer, some of these actual positions, as they go through valuation process, they might change. So rather than having a administrative assistant one, it might be an office assistant. It just, it has to go through the JEC process, with the exception of deputies, so deputy sheriffs and attorneys don't utilize JEC. So these are just an outline of the positions. In the public safety, we have technology services, that project coordinator is going to be for our CAD, so commuter-aided dispatch, RMS, records management system, JMS, jail management system that we are going through right now, the upgrade. And that position will support that and also support the sheriff's office, that's why it's in the public safety function. And I'm looking for other notable items. The Sparks Justice Court position, it's, that's actually really interesting. It's a shared position with animal services. It's a technology position, and so the two of them got together and said, hey, we can try to leverage and share our resources and still be able to enhance our services and be able to, you know, do more things that we need to do. That is a net zero. It was a reallocation, funded with reallocation, and the same with the conflict council administrator. That's funded with reallocation. So back again to talk about the sources. So this is general fund sources and uses. Sometimes you'll see it as one document. It was pretty small to, to get it on one page, so this is the top portion, otherwise known as the sources. So you can see that bottom line going into fiscal year '24 right now is 5.7% increase. We're seeing the property tax under the taxes area, 8.45% increase. That is based on the pro forma from the state. So both the assessor's office and the treasurer's office give information to taxation, they put it in. They put it in, there's, there's, there's abatement. There's also other exemptions. Then there's new construction and they come up with our estimated revenue. We're usually within about 1% of that number, so it's usually pretty good. We have licenses, permits. We break out consolidated tax. It's in our other, inner, other intergovernmental. There's the SCCRT EB 104 I was talking about. So when you take taxes, C-Tax, SCCRT EB 104, that's the 87% that we're, that we're talking about. Everything else is pretty, pretty much on a, you know, a linear, you know, if there's a population increase, we'll see increases in some areas of revenues. But if there are legislative changes, like we've seen over the past few sessions with some judicial reform, we might see impacts to revenue in other areas like fines and forfeitures. And here we have our uses. So we have our salaries and wages and benefits, services and supplies, the settlement of one-time. So although it's over multiple years, it's one-time, it's coming from fund balance. So you can see the final budget, we have the $22 million and the estimate to complete for this year, we think is gonna be closer to 10. So we true that up as we go through this process. We do, we, we have to do an annual budget. The state does a two-year budget. We are required to do an annual budget. So we do have opportunities to true that up. And then, but if some of the, sorry, I'm gonna go back real quick. But if we look at the C-Tax with the estimated versus the final budget, you can see that's where we're accounting for some of this flattening. And so this was planned, this was planned one-time use of fund balance. This is, you know, we've talked to and spoken to the rating agencies and they understand, you know, the board's direction and policy and the plan behind this. And so we can see that with the final budget versus the estimated, it, we're, at this point, we're looking at using less fund balance than originally anticipated. And then having one-time use of a little over $30 million for fiscal year '24. This slide talks about the capital improvement highlights. We have $191 million in capital. We have 110, almost 111 million in the capital funds. So those are, we call them our four funds, but those are our actual capital funds. There are capital improvements and capital projects and other funds. The largest one there is the utilities fund, the largest project there, and you'll see in another slide, is planning for the South Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility, the Stummorf Expansion. So we have various areas. Interesting to note, in the capital facilities fund, that lighter blue, 8%, 88-ish percent of that, that's a tax rate. It's, it's five cents, .05. And about 88% of that goes to between the state general fund and the cities. So we keep about 13% of that. So there are funds that have passed through that we assess, we collect, but then it goes somewhere else. Now I'm gonna hand it over to Dave.
Thanks Lori. For the record, Dave Solaro, Assistant County Manager. In keeping high level with the capital improvement plan, there really still is a need for the county to focus on major maintenance of facility, infrastructure as guided by the infrastructure scorecard. Many of the projects under the facility section here relate directly to the board direction to raise the grade of the scorecard and properly maintain the assets of the community. Additionally, longer-term projects such as the P-25 radio system and software needs, needed to keep business moving are noted within the, the recommendate, recommended one-time transfers that Lori had spoken about earlier from the general fund, which is really there to, to make sure that those projects are finalized and highlighted. On the right-hand side of this is the utility section. As Lori mentioned, the continued expansion of the South Trekkie Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and associated projects really are the bulk of the work within that utility program. I wanted to recommend, remind the board that those projects are fully supported by the utility ratepayers. So those aren't general funds. I know that's come up in, in, in the past with board members. Additionally, within the parks and open space, we're really trying to focus on what we've heard from the citizens in our most recent master plan update, which is the trails and playground improvements. So a lot of these programs that are noted here, again, are with a focus of that infrastructure scorecard, with what we've heard from our citizens as their top priorities for things that they would like to see in our park systems. And then just really quickly, to summarize the CIP focus, we're really trying to spin the CIP to the overall Washoe County strategic plan. So using the infrastructure scorecard to inform the needs and leverage the funding of the projects with a sustainable oriented outcomes for our facilities, and then as well utilizing the inclusive and accessible principles to improve our parks and park experience. And so just threw a couple of pictures in here. You've got an LED program in one of our buildings funded out of the CIP that's really going towards that sustainable nature of what we're doing. And then there's a picture of a playground. We have about five playgrounds to be replaced throughout our park systems, looking for all-inclusive playground systems. So with that, I will kick it back to Lori to finish up.
Thank you. For the record, again, Lori Cook, Budget Manager. These are the other governmental funds, so non-proprietary funds that are outside of the general fund. So we can see the health district, the library expansion fund, animal services, I don't have to read them all. But some of these do actually have tax rates associated with them, so property tax rates, whether it's a legislative override, so it's something that we have to, or whether it's been a voter-approved. So the library expansion has a voter-approved, animal services has a voter-approved, the indigent tax levy, that used to be the indigent accident, the indigent medical, it was expanded through legislative session circa 20, I wanna say 2013, 2015, don't quote me, to be used for indigent services. We are required by NRS to provide indigent services and services to indigent. That tax rate is between six and 10 cents. That can be assessed, and we assess six. But we also support with general fund transfer, and that's what you saw in the previous slides. The senior services, that is a one cent. It's in perpetuity, voter-approved, but we can see their budget for next year is, is not just the transfer, it's about $7.5 million. So there are various funding sources within human services, so that will be senior services, child protective services. Even in indigent, in some cases, there are also other federal monies that can be used and are used Title IV E for child protective services, for example. Sometimes fee for service, different block grants, different things that support those activities in addition to any tax rate or general fund support. So this goes through all of our governmental funds, so it's those other special revenue funds, kind of one of those operational. Then we have the capital funds on here, and then we have our debt funds. The, oh, sorry, that was the other one. But the appropriations, if you see senior, again, 7.6. We do have in some special revenue funds, we do have, you know, planned use of fund balance in, in some circumstances, in some situations. We can see the health fund is rather large. They have some ARPA and/or COVID funding that they are spending down and planning to use. And looking for, I'm just trying to think of other things to let you know if you haven't been part of this process before. This roads special revenue fund does get general fund transfer, and that's to cover the administrative portion. That fund also receives a portion or our portion, a smaller portion of motor vehicle fuel tax, and that can't be used for administration, and so that helps support the roads fund for the unincorporated roads. Proprietary funds, these are not governmental funds. These are funds that, and I put the definition, and if you wanna go look up the NRS, you can. But the enterprise funds, basically, they're operate like a business. So they, this is where the utilities fund building and safety engulf. You have ratepayers, you have, you know, monies that go in, and then they sustain. The internal service funds are operations and, that we provide services to other departments, so equipment services. So like our large fleet, our fleet management, you can see the largest there are health benefits. So when we have an increase in health benefits, which that comes separately to the board, we're on a calendar year health benefits plan, program. Those premiums and what is paid go into the health benefits fund, and then they pay out. So it's, it's a separate fund. And then we have the risk management fund. So same thing, self-insured, we have risk management, we have risk management analysts, and things that have to go through the risk management fund, such as some of our property and liability claims and our insurance, and those types of things go into the risk management fund. And you can see those appropriations of 120, almost 125 million. And because they do operate more, if people in private business, it operate a little bit more private business-like on, from an accounting perspective, that's why you see the operating revenues, the operating expenses, non-operating revenues, non-operating expenses. So when we're looking at the other funds and what's being recommended as far as enhancements or expansions, we have positions for senior services. This will help expand the homemaker program, seven within the health district, children's, children's protective services, I usually use the acronym E-CPS. Indigent, the two and E911 are notable. Those are network technology positions to help support the CAD, RMS, JMS. That kind of alluded to earlier. Animal services, this is where that other .5 shared position is gonna live, and they're gonna have a supervising veterinarian, so that is gonna be a new classification for the county and hopefully allow for better, faster treatment of sick and injured animals and, you know, other outcomes that animal services is looking for. Risk management, as we've expanded our operations and our employees and, you know, different things that we've had happen, that will be for an analyst and then two part-time positions at the May Museum. So the other part of salary study related to corn fairy or in these special revenue funds, so that's the 4.5, so that's how we get to the 11.5. OPEB, so there will be an OPEB impact as well as the net PERS requirement. And just as a reminder, when PERS increases, the employer in Nevada pays half, and then the employee pays half with a salary reduction. So if it's an increase of 1%, the employer pays .5, and then the employee takes a .5% reduction. These are the actual physical positions that are being recommended. Again, there could be different outcomes based on review of what those actual titles are, but the intent of the services provided remains the same. And then we come to, you know, how do, how do we get to $1 billion? We have 23 funds. We provide a lot of service. We're investing in staffing, so back to county manager's point. We're investing in capital projects. We have strategic projects of the governmental funds, that $939 million. When you break that out by function and you start allocating function to those $94 million of transfer, you can see we have public safety is the largest, followed by welfare, and general government, judicial, those types of things in there. And general government will be, I don't wanna say skewed, but general government is where those inclined property tax payments are charged to or posted to, so that will have a blip for a few years on general government. And then the enterprise or proprietary funds, excuse me, of the other 124.8 million. That's how we get to the billion dollars. Oh, and just as a reminder, within the capital improvement fund, that does, and within the special revenue funds, that does not include our carryforward for ARPA. So this budget does not include any approval for ARPA projects. Anything that's already budgeted is, is in there, but we have to deal with it at year end or as augmentation because it's a different funding source that's going into capital. So this is, this is exclusive of ARPA. And then we have our next step. So one we've already done, we have to file a tenet of budget by April 15th, so that was dropped off on Friday. Then next is a public hearing on the tenet of budget with adoption of the final budget, and that right now is scheduled for May 16th. We have to have a final budget with signatures, two hard copies, single-sided, dropped off to taxation by June 1st. We have a five-year capital improvement plan that has to be filed with the state, and we also have our debt management policy and statement of indebtedness that also has to be filed with the state. All of those items do come to the board, they're not outside of the board, but the five-year capital improvement plan is normally follows the final budget because once the appropriations are approved, then the five-year CIP is valid, so to speak, because the funding, at least for year one, has been established. And those are just the NRS references as to, you know, the timelines and, and what happens. I don't wanna go to the bad side. If anybody wants to know about the bad side, if we don't have an adopted budget, you can ask me what happens, but it's, it's not good.
Thank you very much. What a great presentation. Good job, team and Mr. Manager. I see we have public comment, but I looked to the board on comments. I certainly have comments and questions on the budget, but wanna see if any other board members wanna chime in. Commissioner Clark, I see you've signed in.
Thank you. You knew I'd have some comments about this. I'm looking at this, the budget, and I've got lots of questions. I could probably spend several hours on this. I don't know how much time we have, but first of all, someone made a comment and public comment earlier about us having a budget of about $3 million for, for seniors. Is that, is that correct?
It's a little over seven. The $3 million is relative to the general fund transfer to that fund.
Okay, so we've got seven.
About 7.6.
Great, thanks, thanks for clarifying that. As I, as I look through some of the requests for extra employees, you know, something that I see is, is missing, and I've talked to the DA about it. You know, Herb Kaplan gave an excellent presentation last week about his group that Special Division of the DA's office that goes after parents that don't pay their child support, deadbeat parents, for lack of a better word. And, you know, he really doesn't need another attorney, but if he had a paralegal, that would really improve his, his collection ability. And when his collection ability is improved, that means it's less money that we have to spend for, for children that are not getting, getting their payments from, from their parents. So I think that's something that we need to look at right away, is, you know, they're not asking for another attorney there, but if we could get him a paralegal, that would really help things along. Next, I'm looking at public defender and alternative public defender. These people are just buried over there. I don't see any, any relief for them whatsoever. So there's a question I'd like to find out. Can we get, look into the fact and of trying to help them out? Maybe I'd like to have, I'm gonna try and have a meeting with them and find out what they really need to improve their efficiencies there. So that's a big concern of mine. We talk about vulnerable populations all through the budget, and we're gonna do this and that, and the next thing. But, you know, a real vulnerable population is somebody's in jail and can't afford an attorney, and they've got an attorney that we represent, that we use to represent them who's so overloaded, they can't really properly defend somebody. So I'm gonna make sure that those citizens have a good representation, or at least something that's, that's not so burdensome to the public defender and the alternative public defender's office that, that they can, they can't get some quality legal representation. And I, I see that, you know, it was, it was a big thing at one point in time, a priority to have a jail infirmary. When is that, when, when are we gonna be looking at that? Is that something that was on the budget years ago and isn't now? I'm also very concerned about budgeting for a dispatch, a regional dispatch, and how, how is that gonna come into play? Is that in the, the public service part of the budget now, or public, not public service, but, um, um, public safety, excuse me. Public safety, I think public safety dispatch is a major component. I've talked to the unions, I've talked, talked to other people that involved in the, the fire departments in, in the cities and counties, and, you know, we need to make sure that that's seamless. The public, when the public calls for a fire, fire truck or they need help, they don't wanna have any internal turf wars between jurisdictions over how, how they're gonna get the, they want the service as fat, the public wants and deserves to have the service out to them as soon as possible. When there's little turf wars amongst organizations, that's not conducive to public safety. So that needs to be addressed in the budget, and, and we need to have a discussion about that and get that and move the needle a little bit on that. So just, just some things that come to mind just immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Vice Chair Herman.
Oops. Thank you, Chair. My, my, my whole thing is my, kind of my district five wish list and hoping that it's buried somewhere in the details of this very, very well put-together budget. My wish list starts off with protecting, making sure we have the funds to protect the citizens from flooding in Swan Lake. Funding for unpaved rural roads. Funding for unpaved rural roads. Make sure we have enough sheriff patrol in D5 to handle all the additional people that have moved there in the last very, very well, I mean, they've been piling in there pretty fast in the last couple of years. And there's some things that I don't know if are legal to have in there, but I know the food bank is empty. And of course, we've mentioned the seniors and it looks like funding wise that they're, that we're spending the money there and veterans. I didn't see that mentioned, but I'm hoping that all these things are right there in those details. So I think we're, it seems like we have spent so much money in the ROV's office. We remodeled the whole ROV office twice in the last election. So I hope we're spending it wisely. And then I'd like to see a little less for homelessness because we've spent an awful lot of money on homelessness. We probably are going to have a little bit of a slowdown, I would say, and I'm looking towards that and hoping it doesn't happen, but if it does, we've got to be responsible with the people's money. So thank you very much, but good job.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. I have a few questions. First of all, I applaud the manager and the budget office for understanding that we're probably looking at some flattening of revenues and being very responsible when looking at, you know, working with these departments. I know the work that goes into talking through, you know, what do you need this position for? How can, you know, you wait on it or can you share with a different department like what you've done with animal services? And so I commend you for your work and I know that it's tough, especially because so many of these departments are under elected officials and so it's a fun, a fun job to do with $1 billion of the least general fund. So thank you so much for your work on that. I just had a few things that I was hoping to see and I was, I don't see any additional positions. I know that the courts really need a caseworker for their adults. I know the detention service unit does a great job on that warm handoff to the courts, but once folks get into the court system, it's very complex to navigate. So if there was a possibility of sharing a caseworker position for that, I think that would be very important. And I think it was something that the Human Services Agency was working on. I just don't see it in the list of positions. I know also that in, at the end of last year, this board approved a third assistant county manager. And I think with this board's emphasis on seniors and our human services agency, I think that this manager would really help with so many of those things that this board wants to see, especially because we have undertaken so many more people with our homeless services. And I think it's in the budget, but not going to be filled. And so I'd like to see us look at that. And perhaps with the dispatch EMS consolidation project manager position, since that won't be a forever job, some of those duties could be given to another person if a third ACM were to be hired. And then on snow removal, I know that this year has been an epic year for snow. And just for my district, it's been so difficult to get those pathways cleared. I think our staff do an amazing job, but we've had a snow, our pathway plow has been down, then we rented a plow, then it went down. And so if we could get an additional plow or maybe even contract out for those services, I just think it's really important that, you know, so many of our community members walk and I hate to see them walking on a fast highway that doesn't have a ton of room on it with all those, with all that snow. So just some sort of investment in that way. And I see that those are my main comments. I see Commissioner Clark is now signed in again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said initially, just my initial take was just the things that I mentioned, but I've got a group more of questions that I'd like to ask. Again, back to the dispatch regionalization. I know it's been talked about for a while. I'd like to have plans and dates. Do we have any of these when that might happen? I see affordable housing with vulnerable populations. Where are our plans to gain affordable, what are our plans to gain affordable housing for our residents in Washoe County? The people paying taxes, you know, one of the things that the vulnerable populations, senior housing, our seniors are being squeezed out of their homes, squeezed out of their apartments. What are we doing to help them? As I talk about affordable housing, it brings to mind why, you know, why haven't we had the Dandini spectrum development up for a vote? I mean, if we're having, if we're trying to spend money, we should be trying to bring in some income for the county. I mean, this is an approved project by the city of Reno and I believe that the sheriff and the developer have worked out their kinks and where the extra road's supposed to be. So when are we going to get this on the agenda? I mean, this is the time of the year when builders need to get out and start doing their building. The weather's hopefully changing and again, that can start getting on the tax rolls as soon as we can approve this secondary road. Again, that's over, I think that we figured out it was a $180 million project. I mean, great tax base for that community. And when we can bring in that money, it adds to the ability to pay for these other projects. The county's revised fiscal 203 year end forecast for C taxes from the original budget increase of 5.5 to an estimated increase of 2% over the prior fiscal year. The county's going to be faced with, in the future, we're going to be faced with no COVID or ARPA funds and, you know, we need to bring in some other revenue. And one of them again was that project I just talked about. The county's realizing higher prices for goods and services, struggling to hire employees, recognizing that higher than expected pension and benefit increases partially due to decreased market devaluations of investments. As the economic growth slows, the county revenue growth is also expected to slow. It seems that the county's going to have to tighten a bit. My question is, is where that leaves most of our county employees regarding the corn fairy review? We discussed back at our meeting on February 14th meeting that, and I haven't heard no more about it, the retro pay going to the majority of the county employees. You know, county manager Brown direct report, his people reported directly to him, received raises on January 2nd, 2023. The majority of the county employees are still waiting for their increases. You know, what does that do to morale? Will the employee raises be retroactive to when the management staff received their increases that were approved back on December 13th, 2022? You know, Commissioner Lucy Jung and Hartung moved forward, giving the county manager's direct employees a raise. Just benefited a few and not many of the Washoe County. Plus I keep hearing about how difficult it is to hang on employees and find new employees. Wouldn't we want to keep our hardworking staff and treat them the same as management? I don't see that reflected in the 2024 budget. Should it be or did I miss it? Some notable highlights, we've got full time employees, we've got full time employees at the registrar voters office, elections registrar is 10, but when I reviewed the organizational chart, we've got nine, including the registrar voters and you're asking, they're asking for an additional three. What am I reading and what's the math and what am I missing? As far as the district attorney, you know, is getting 11 new employees. And again, I brought it up earlier, but I'll bring it up again. The public defender and the assistant public defender, no new employees. I keep hearing about our most vulnerable populations. How, you know, why don't, don't they also need legal representation? We're worried about housing people, but you know, I don't want to see anybody languish in jail any longer than they need to be. I'm just looking at the indigent fund of 23 million, the homeless fund of 21.9 million. Senior services fund, as was pointed out earlier, 3.4 million plus the other monies that added up to the, was it 7 million? So I'm just looking at, it looks out of balance. A lot of this looks out of balance. I mean, I'd like to figure out a way to maybe give some more money to the seniors, help the public defender, the assistant, the alternate public defender. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner have comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call public comment?
Of course. First up, we have Penny Brock.
Penny Brock, for the record, I see that in the future, there's going to be one or two more meetings to discuss this. I just looked at this briefly and some of my concerns as a taxpayer are, first of all, the $1 billion budget. I mean, I just went glassy eyed, as I'm sure you did too, $1 billion. So one of my concerns is the salary study at $4.1 million. The second thing is what they did is they compared us with other communities. So my question is, what other communities? Was it, you know, the same population? Where did they, you know, come to the conclusion? And I don't begrudge our hardworking staffers, employees a raise, but on the other hand, so many in our community, we the taxpayers, are not getting raises. Seniors and those of us on fixed income, we're not getting raises. And yet in July, again, our property tax bills are going to be going up. Y'all heard from Mr. Armstrong at that tear jerking comment he gave last week, how because of health issues, he and his wife at what, 85? How are they going to pay their property tax bills? So I, you know, I would like to see the county consider at a certain, and maybe this has to go through the state, but our seniors should get a break at a certain age, like 85, 90 years old. They've been faithful and good stewards to pay their property taxes all those years and yet their property taxes keep going up and they're on fixed income. The other thing is, it was interesting in the budget they've got for the homeless, the homeless and the indigent. I'm confused. Why are we paying, is that a word salad game? So I would encourage the commissioners to look more closely at what is the difference between indigent versus homeless and can something be done there with that? So I think that's all for now, but I wish you well in working on this budget. Thank you.
Renee Rosentus, for the record. Whenever I hear that there's monies that's going to be allocated to the general fund, that's a red flag for me because when it goes into the general fund, we don't hear whoever is voting on where that money is going to, once it hits the general fund. That's something that we don't get to hear in here. So they have a general fund in the school district and, you know, just about every entity. So if seniors are going to get $7 million, but it's going into the general fund, they could end up with $500,000. That doesn't mean it's going to go to the seniors. Once it goes into the general fund, it can be spent anywhere. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and hopefully you'll pay attention to that because our seniors need to be taken care of and I'm one of them now. So yeah, I see the discrepancy and it's very, it's very difficult for some. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, Mr. Manager, with all the comments, do you have any clarifying questions or do you feel like you have enough direction today?
No, I have direction, Madam Chair. We will take the comments and we will come back to the relevant commissioners with answers.
Great. And Mr. Edwards, do we need to make a motion on this item?
I would recommend it just because of the magnitude of this item.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Before I make a motion, I just wanted to make a couple of comments to the team. I think you did a beautiful job taking this balanced approach and presenting all of these recommendations to us today and tying it back to our strategic priorities, both in today's presentation and during our briefing. So thank you for that. And I appreciate Manager Brown's efforts to improve compensation for our employees and continuing to listen to the various department needs throughout the county. Finally, I also really like to draw attention and offer my support to all the improvements made to infrastructure. It's one of those things that's often overlooked and it's super important, particularly to improve the grade of our infrastructure scorecard. So thank you all. And with that, I will move to acknowledge the status report and recommend FY 2024 budget and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commission with a tentative and final budget for adoption and a public, at a public hearing to be scheduled on May 16th, 2023.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Look at that.
And a second by Vice Chair Herman. Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. Thank you very much. Great job, team. We'll see you soon. Okay. We are now on to item seven, Mr. Manager.
Item seven is donations.
And I think Commissioner Garcia will be reading these into the record for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, thank you to the wonderful contributors outlined in all of these items today. Item 7A1 is to accept donations totaling $2,613.04 from donation for discovery, 377.64, come in from the cold at $2,182. And the donation drop box at the May Museum for $53.40 for regional park and open space programs and facilities, as well as item 7B1, to accept donations to the Washoe County Regional Animal Services in the amount of $2,279.75, retroactive for the period January 1 through March 31st, 2023, from numerous donors. And there's an attached list to be used for the humane care and treatment of sick and/or injured stray, abandoned or at risk animals. So with that, I'd like to make that a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Do I have a, oh, and do we have any public comment, Madam Clerk?
Nobody is signed in right now.
Okay. And Commissioner or Vice Chair Herman, were you about to do a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay. And then let's take a little bio break for folks, so, and we'll resume again at 1 o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. I think that the clerk heard the verbal, but...
For consent, it's assumed that it's unanimous. Otherwise, you would vote on them each separately. So it's set up in Granicus to record a unanimous vote on a consent item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Solano?
Good afternoon. For the record, Dave Solero, Assistant County Manager, here to take questions on Item 8B1, I believe, for the appraiser list.
And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, last week, I was told it was difficult to get companies to apply for, to be on the appraisal board when it was on the agenda last time or the time before. After meeting, after the meeting, I was contacted by Carson Cook with Johnson Perkins Griffin, who alerted me to the fact that they were going to apply, but the county application portal was down. Their words, not mine. When I spoke with Manager Brown about this, he had indicated they could apply next year. And I have a difficulty, I have difficulty with that answer. It makes me question how often the application portal is broken, and people can't apply. I'd like to see Johnson Perkins Griffin added to the list, and I applaud Mr. Cook for having the courage to let me know the portal was down. I believe Mr. Solero reached out to him last Friday and explained that he could apply again next year. Then when I spoke with Mr. Solero yesterday, day before, whenever it was, I asked him, how many appraisals does a county need to be sourced out on an annual basis? It's two or three. So I don't know what the rush is to get this through, and he explained to me why he had to have it pushed through. But I think that we should reopen this, reintroduce this availability to all the appraisers in the county and the state, and then have this up on the, up on the agenda for a vote. So again, there's one, at least one company right now that wants to be involved, and can until next year. We only do two or three appraisals a year. What's the rush? Can we put this out for another month and let these other folks that are interested have an opportunity to be on the list?
Commissioner Clark, I would say I'm ready to move forward with these folks on the list today, but we can definitely go out in three months or six months. Would you be open to giving staff direction for that? So we can move forward with the folks who applied through the process, and still allow for other people who are interested in the amount of time to apply?
I have a question. Do we have any pending appraisal projects that force this to come to a head today? What is the urgency? If I bring it up again in 30, 60, 90 days, what's the difference of holding it for 30 days? Do it once and call it a day, rather than bring it back up yet again?
Mr. Solano?
For the Commissioner, through the Chair, I think it's important to note that Washoe County has a series of purchasing policies that we follow. We also have county code, as well as the Nevada revised statutes, the laws that we must follow when we do these, these types of things. So I think it's important for the board to understand that we created a solicitation for qualifications through a process whereby it's actually outlined in county code, for us to get with the, sorry, the Nevada real estate division, to get a list of all general appraisers within the state, send the RFQ announcement to each of those in the state, and then have a period for those proposers to propose, if they're interested, to Washoe County. So we have done that, and as Commissioner Clark pointed out, Johnson Perkins wrote a note, said, hey, we couldn't get into the portal. I did call Mr., the representative from Johnson Perkins to discuss that. There is some question on kind of whether the portal was the issue, or whether the understanding of how to get into the portal was the question or the concern. I do think it is, regardless of that piece, there was no communication with our purchasing staff who ran the solicitation. Regardless of that, I do think it's important, because of the way we have been successful over the years, the ethics involved in the way we let our projects to the community to respond, that we have gone through that process, we have provided the response to you through that process. And so I think the recommendation to the board is that there are three things that could be done, and I think most of them are in keeping with the success that we have had as a trusted member of the purchasing community, to take the solicitation seriously, and either tell the, you know, provide direction to staff to throw out and reject all qualifications that were received, to accept the qualifications and provide us direction on what to do, next steps, on whether we should open the solicitation up again as defined in county code, or to simply accept the list as provided by staff. I think those are the options that staff has provided here. But I do believe that it's incumbent on the board to make a decision and provide that direction to us, so that we can, we can continue forward. We have a recommendation to accept the list, but that's just a recommendation at this point. So hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Solero, for explaining that. But what my heartburn is, is if we have a portal that professional appraisers can't seem to navigate, I think it's incumbent on us to lower the bar enough to allow these folks who want to be involved, and be inclusive, and allow these people to be involved, figure out how we can get them on the list. They want to be involved. I don't know anybody there personally. This person reached out to me. I don't have a dog in this, in this fight, but I just don't like the fact that I hear time and time again that people can't get in to make applications. It's not only for this appraiser, but you've heard me harp on this on other issues, where people can't seem to find the portal. Thank goodness, Ms. Wilson in our office finally put together a nice matrix that everybody can look at. But prior to that, nobody had an idea when it's open, when it's open, how to get there. People try and get in there, and they can't. They try and make an application, they find out that the cutoff time was yesterday. It's just, it's just an ongoing issue, and I think this is a good opportunity, since there's no big pressing issue to get an appraisal job done, that we could wait another, take it off the table, as you said, and reopen this, and let people have a chance to get their name on the list. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Andreola?
I have a question. Thank you. I have a question, Mr. Solero. If action were to be taken, when is the next open period for interested applicants?
It's a very good question. I would suggest that the board give us direction on that. This list was actually created after legislative action in 2006, and so we've just gotten to the point where we have one appraiser left on that initial list. And we decided, well, it's, you know, probably time to go out and, you know, refresh that list. It's probably be done on a more routine basis, but I would take direction from the board on that.
Let me have a follow-up, please.
Yes.
Based on, I guess I have a couple of questions. What's been the average, for instance? Based on, I guess I have a couple of questions. What's been the average, for instance, over the course of even, let's say, the last year or even the last five years, if you want to go that far, of the number of people who have responded and actually met the eligibility requirements and were able to actually function in the capacity as outlined?
So as mentioned, the last time we went out for, for an appraisal list was in 2006. And so, you know, when we had that list, we would, we would go through item, or person by person and offer them in descending order or ascending order, either way, you know, appraisal positions within the county. So, so we have, we have not gone out and so to solicit who wants to be available. This is the first time we've done that since 2006. And we did receive the four through the portal and then the email to Commissioner Clark of the, of the fifth that is interested.
Two more questions. Is there any concern of out of compliance? You spoke, you spoke to the purchasing policies that are in place that actually align with this particular request. Is there any out of compliance exposure with actually not taking action?
I might need a little assistance from the District Attorney.
Okay.
You know, as far as, you know, who has the authority to, to, to accept or reject? So I, we took this as a standard, a status of, you know, if this was a construction project that we had bidders on and they didn't meet the requirements, we would come to this Board to reject those bids. So essentially, that's what we're, how we're doing this professional service request for qualifications. I believe that's the appropriate approach, and I would defer to Mr. Edwards.
Yeah, can you repeat that for me, the question that you had from Mr. Solero?
I'm just curious, if there is no action taken, would it put Mr. Solero and, if you will, Washtau County out of compliance with the purchasing policies that are currently in place?
I don't think it would. The statute in Chapter 244 requires you to have a procedure for selecting appraisers by ordinance. That's what Mr. Solero's brought in for you today is to update that list based on more current information because it has dwindled down to one. But I don't see any material change if you were to wait, for example, for a month or whatever. It's been, what, since 2006, right? So we're 17 years in. I don't think 17 years and one month is gonna do a lot in the materiality column. That's my opinion.
I just, I really appreciate that. Thank you. And my last question is, based on the conversation that you had with the contact that Commissioner Clark had, was there any indication that he was looking at a timeline for submitting consideration for this?
I had suggested that, you know, I had actually asked the question, what would, what would work for your company to be, you know, considered onto a list? Would it be three months, six months, nine months, 12 months? You know, the response back was, I'm gonna paraphrase a little bit, but, you know, they're not hurting for work today. They have a 90-day backlog. And so, you know, certainly the first three months of a potential new list or direction to go back out seems to be, seems to fit within that, you know, that timeframe that certainly Johnson Perkins is, is, you know, associated with. I think the other side of it is, we do have four other firms that met the requirements, the qualifications, the timing, and those other sorts of things. And that's what I was, you know, trying to allude to, is we have a process set up in place to make sure that when we do solicitations, people take our solicitation seriously and they know that we're, you know, following rules and regulations. So just throw that out there.
So just for clarification, if in fact we accept the four as presented, then there isn't a defined timeframe to open up that portal? In other words, can it just stay open and allow folks to, that meet these eligibility requirements, submit? Or is there an open and then a closed period? I'm just not clear on that.
Yes. For clarification, we did have a period of time. So it opened on a day and it ended at a time, and we requested people submit their qualifications so that we could then verify that the qualifications met the requirements of state law for them to be included on a list and brought before this Board. Certainly, it is a purview of this Board to, as I, as I mentioned, you know, you can adopt the list as presented by staff. You can adopt the list and tell us to go back out in three, six, nine, 12 years. I mean, you know, completely up to you. Or you can, you know, reject the entire list and ask us to go back out and do the process again. I see those as the three options for this Board.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Again, I'd like to thank you for recognizing me. Again, we haven't had a new list for 17 years. We only have a couple of appraisals done a year. There's four other companies on here. The other applicants said they couldn't navigate the portal. What's a month gonna do? I mean, we're 17 years into this. So why not let everybody who wants to come to the party, come to the party and give them an opportunity, whether they have a workload for nine months or six months or six years? The point, the real point of the matter is the county only hires a couple of appraisals a year. So it's, it's not that pressing. What's, what's the urgency? Thank you.
I would say, Commissioner Clark, I have concerns that we only have one appraiser on our list. And so if we do a couple a year, it goes to one person. And we've got four folks who were able to navigate the portal. And I think that we, you know, I would propose that we move forward with this list and give staff an opportunity to go out. I don't think rejecting the list is very business friendly. These people took the time to follow our rules to be considered by this Board. And so that's where I sit today. I do see that we have public comment, but Commissioner Clark has signed in again.
So I completely agree with you. But I would say if these applicants that are on the list were on the other side of the coin, had they tried to get on and couldn't, I just have the same consideration for them. That's all I'm suggesting. My question, my final question on this is, is there a pending appraisal that has to be done in the imminent near future?
For the Commissioner, through the Chair, there is not.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can you please call public comment?
Janet Butcher? Janet Butcher, for the record. I was gonna talk about this at the end, but this kind of folds into, to an experience that I had. I don't know if you can see this, but I ran out of white paper. But I went on to the volunteer section and what have you, and I pulled up the Washtau County Planning Commission. And when I clicked on the part where it says, click here, I thought I was gonna get information about the planning committee. Instead, this is what I got. So if somebody said they were having an issue, I would almost say they might have been having an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So Commissioner Clark, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we reopen this, allow, notify the, the company that wasn't able to navigate the portal, notify the other companies. We have their information on record. I think we can just reapply for them if they want to continue on with this process. Again, if there's nothing imminent, nothing pressing, I don't think that anybody's gonna be angry and withdraw their name for consideration if we're opening this up for another, let's make it for two weeks, make it for a month, just a short period of time, where somebody who couldn't navigate the system gets an opportunity, just as witnessed by Ms. Butcher. You know, it isn't always the easiest thing to do to, to make applications. And this may have happened at this time. So let's be business friendly and allow them to reapply. So I make a motion that we, that we reject the list and reopen, open the list.
Okay. Do I have a second?
You got a second.
A second by Vice Chair Herman. Any comment on the motion?
May I have a point of order, please?
Yes.
I need to get clarification on the motion. Is there a time certain for that to be reopened? I'm just not, I'm just not clear on that part of it.
Make it another 30 days. Yeah, 30 days.
Secondary agrees.
So can I clarify that the motion is to reject the current list of applicants and keep it open for 30 days and then bring it back?
That's, that's my motion. Thank you.
Okay.
And I will be voting no, as I've already stated, but I don't think it's fair for these folks to reapply. And they've already gone through the process, and we can just reopen it in a few months. But I understand that there's a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. Nay.
Nay.
And I'm looking up at the screen to see where we're at. It does pass. Okay. All right. Mr. Manager, we are now on to item nine.
Item nine is a recommendation for discussion and possible action in regards to the appointments and/or reappointment of commissioners to boards and commissions, alteration of terms of service on boards and commissions where legally possible, permissible, and such other action as the Board of Commissioners may desire to take in regards to those administrative matters. Boards and commissions for which possible changes to appointments could be made under the item include all of the boards and commissions listed at the end of this agenda, the various boards and commissions that commissioners may be members of or liaisons to.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So I have some thoughts on this I'd like to share with the Board. As your Chair, the tradition is that the Chair helps to make recommendations of boards and commissions. And so here are my proposals on the vacant positions. And then I heard from other commissioners who were looking to change some of the boards that they're on before this item came to us. So I will also be discussing that. So if you look at your vacant positions in alphabetical order, we have Regional Transportation Commission. I recommend Commissioner Garcia sit on that. We are about to undergo a major project in her district in Sun Valley, and she will be a great representative on that Board. For the Reno Sparks Convention and Visitors Authority, as your Chair, I recommend that I sit on that Board, and I will represent this entire commission's interests and work with you on all tourism matters. On the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency Board, we, actually, Commissioner Andriola has to sit on that Board because of statute. So I am recommending that she will not recommending, that is, that is going to be her seat. And then Truckee Meadows Water Authority Board, I'm recommending Commissioner Andriola. I think that she'll bring a lot of her construction background to that position. On the Truckee River Flood Management Authority alternate, I recommend Commissioner Garcia. And I'd like to have the Truckee River Flood Management Authority member be Commissioner Andriola. We are about to undergo a lot of projects, the Visto Narrows and Sparks, and I think she'll be a great rep for that. For the Washtau County Investment Committee, I recommend Commissioner Andriola. And for the Washtau County Stadium Authority, I recommend Commissioner Andriola. For the Western Regional Water Commission, I recommend Commissioner Andriola. And for the Seniors Board alternate position, I recommend Commissioner Andriola. And I have, I, I sit on the Washtau County School District Capital Funding Committee and Washtau County School District Oversight Committee, and I recommend that Commissioner Andriola sit on both of those Boards. So rounding out the recommendations, I see that Commissioner Clark has signed in.
First of all, I'd like to direct your attention to page eight of the agenda. And I see Commissioner Andriola is already on, on the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency Governing Board. Is that a typo on page?
It's statute. She's required to be on that Board.
Oh, okay. Very well. Okay.
Her interest.
I understand. I completely understand because we hadn't had this vote and I saw that, saw that on the...
The staff were just on top of it.
They're overachievers.
They are.
Thank you. Okay. We've got that handled. I want to relinquish my downtown Reno Business Improvement District alternative.
Okay.
I need to get off of that. I think it's a conflict of interest since my daughter is a Reno City Council woman. So I would like to be off of that.
Okay.
Regarding RSCVA, Commissioner Herman's been on the commission for nine years. So I'd like to see her on this very important Board. I've been attending the RSCVA meetings since July 2022, and I'll continue to go to the meetings as a resident of Washtau County. But from time to, from my time sitting in the audience, I think it would be beneficial for Commissioner Herman to represent us. District Five is the fastest growing area in Washtau County. Since they have the last, the land to build on, District Five has lost the air races, which is a big draw to the area. They're in danger of losing the Sierra Sage Golf Course since the water bill has gone from about $40,000 a month for effluent water to $120,000. Also, Gierlach, AKA Burning Man, is in Commissioner Herman's district. It just makes sense. And, and if Jeannie's not interested in that, I think we should go with Commissioner Garcia. She should serve on RSCVA since she would be the first, what I feel is such an important Board, and she'd be the first elected by her constituency. Also believe she'd be the first Latina serving on that Board. So that's, that's my reasoning behind that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was thinking about RSCVA, and I would like to be on it. But the rest of my Boards, I would like to remain on all of those Boards.
Great. And with the DRP alternate, is there any Board member that is interested in taking that position? I know Commissioner Garcia is our main person. I'm happy to take it. I was the main person, and I'm happy to fill in when Commissioner Garcia cannot go. So with those recommendations I put on the table, I'm hoping that there is a motion unless there are other comments by the Board. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment? Okay. Looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to move forward with the recommendations you presented at the beginning of this. A gen item.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Are there any questions on the motion in the second? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay.
No.
Commissioner Herman, your vote? Sorry. Thank you. And the motion carries three to two. Thank you very much, everyone. Now we will go on to item 10. Mr. Manager?
Item 10 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed to legislators by Washtau County Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit all bill draft, submit bill draft requests for such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair or the Board to be of critical significance to Washtau County. Possible actions under this item may include the Board making official positions on SB 68. Pending legislative bills can be located at the website. Current bills, the county tracking that may be reported on or discussed are listed under Government Affairs at the county website. Due to time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills that staff will seek direction from the commission on during the, the item. will seek direction from the commission on during the item will be posted on the web site under Government Affairs by 6:00 PM the Friday before the meeting. Due to the rapid pace of the legislative session, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of County Commissioners will be posted as soon as known.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Ms. Smatievich is here, and we'd love to hear from you on how the legislative session is going. I know that a lot of bills died last week. Or this week? Last week, okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kayden Smatievich, and I have the privilege of serving as your Government Affairs liaison. As the chair indicated, last Friday was the first of the big deadlines for bills in this legislative session, and that is, was the deadline for houses, for bills to make it out of committee in their house of origin. So assembly bills needed to be out of assembly committees, and Senate bills needed to be out of Senate committees. We've reformatted your report to indicate those bills that we had previously identified as bills of interest to a separate section on the report that indicates those bills that failed to meet the deadline, or as we like to refer to them, dead bills. Doesn't mean that they won't come back as zombies someplace else, but those bills themselves will not be considered further during the legislative session. I would note that none of the five bills that your board has taken an official position on to date failed to meet the deadline, so all five of those bills are still active. We have two that you had taken a position of opposition to, and three that you had taken a position of support in. Only one of those bills has actually made it to the other house, and that is Assembly Bill 92. That's the bill that pertains to county council. That bill has moved to the Senate and has been scheduled for a hearing tomorrow. And so pursuant to your direction, I will be there and testify in opposition to that bill. We'll continue to monitor the others. There weren't any, we did have on your agenda Senate Bill 68. However, at this time, an earlier version of the agenda that was posted had a minor typographical error and identified that bill as AB68. And so out of an abundance of caution, we would recommend actually that we bring that back at your next meeting, just to be sure that there aren't any concerns with how it was noticed. I don't have any indication that that, that bill's been scheduled for a hearing, and I do have your direction from your most recent meeting last week, and so I'll continue to operate in accordance with that. And so with that, Madam Chair, I don't have any other specific bills to, to raise for you today. There will, there will still continue to be bills introduced that may come from the governor as emergency measures or leadership as emergency measures, but the pace of new bills being introduced should slow down significantly. So I don't expect to be bringing a lot of new bills to you as we continue through the remainder of the session. Our next big deadline is April 25th. That is when bills are due out of their house of origin. So not only out of committee, but have to be out of the full house and on to the second house unless they've been declared exempt from the deadlines. And with that, Madam Chair, happy to answer any questions of bills that may be of interest to, to the board.
Great. I'm looking to my board members to see if there's any questions. It's great to see you in person, so thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
I know you're busy. You're busy in Carson City most days, and I know you've been working so hard. And I've heard just, still hearing just great things about you and our NACO cohorts. They're just really appreciative of your collaboration with the other counties, so thank you for all that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the direction that you all give me and the legislative principles that we have to work under. It really helps me accomplish what I need to on behalf of our, our organization and our community, so thank you.
That's great. Any other commissioner comments or questions? I'm not seeing any, so we'll see you at our next meeting.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just for the record, there is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. We are now moving to item 11. Mr. Manager.
Item 11 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Michael Rodriguez.
Michael Rodriguez, thank you for having me back. I'm going to skip through on my second page that I handed you. We went into what we did on our water. And then our, the Golden Valley property owners decided to continue the injection system per ordinance 1166, and adopt, that was in June of 2002. Currently, that ordinance is 1548. That was adopted November 21st, 2014. I then jumped down in the middle of the page. At present, the issue is the recharge fee. Amount of, amount for 596 residential property owners now. The injection recharge has been inactive for seven years due to Mother Nature doing her thing. And while the Golden Valley property owners are still required to pay the monthly recharge fee of $23.66. I then jumped to my last page. I'd like to point out, there were three items not brought up in the PowerPoint presentation by Duane Smith last week, April 11th, 2023. First one, it was the recent, and I specify the recent, Tara Face Report and Elaine Harford who brought to the, to light the elevated bedrock east of the gun streets along with the municipal wells and the profound effect they had on the water levels surrounding the gun streets. Two was when Duane informed the Golden Valley Property Owners Association Board of the injection shutdown, he and others expected to see the water levels eventually drop, similar, similar to the years between 1998 and June of 2002. The federal government funds ran out, and those were the years that there was no recharge. And then, of course, we brought it back. When after four years they didn't, the community began seeking answers and taking steps to be where we are today. And then last, in nearly 30 years, no one had conceived of an injection shutdown. I did uncover a 1984 DRI report that suggests the injection activity could be idle, idle for six months of each year, but an injection shutdown had not come up in any of my data searches. That was, I just wanted to bring you up from last week. There were a few things that were a little overlooked, but I thought that would be important. And now to the streaming community as well. Thank you.
Next up, we have Vicki Parsons.
I live in Rancho Haven, which is a rural area at the north end of Red Rock Road. Our garbage was not picked up on April 5th or April 12th, which would have included our recyclables. Because there hadn't been any weather problems and our roads were dry, I called Waste Management to find out why they hadn't picked up our cans for a second week in a row. I called at 2:00 PM on April 12th, and the customer service rep said that she could see where the trash truck was on GPS, that they were only 15 stops from my home, and they would be there within 60 to 90 minutes. A few minutes after this call, I heard from a neighbor who said that she had received a call from Waste Management saying they would not pick up her garbage or recyclables that day. I called Waste Management back at 3:30 and asked the customer service rep who answered, why weren't my cans picked up? This woman actually had the nerve to say they were still scheduled for pickup that day, which is another lie. I asked to talk to a supervisor, and when he got on the phone, he admitted they were not coming out that day because the roads were muddy and slick. I told him that was not true, that the roads were dry. He then said, well, maybe the road to get to your road is muddy. I told him the road to get to my road is Red Rock Road, which is paved and not a problem. I did not appreciate being lied to by the three people I spoke with at Waste Management that day. He said I could just put my garbage in the dumpster at the Red Rock Volunteer Fire Department. I informed him that the dumpster is always full, and one dumpster is not near enough to hold all of the trash from the hundreds of contracts that Waste Management has out there. I also don't see anywhere on my bill that says I have to haul my trash in my car to another location. As it is, the dumpster is always overflowing and the wind blows the trash everywhere. It's unsightly, unsanitary, and unsafe. When we don't pay our trash bill, a lien will be placed on our homes. What are the consequences for Waste Management when they don't do their job? UPS and FedEx have not stopped their deliveries in the Rancho Haven area, so why is Waste Management not picking up our trash? They lie about the road conditions and just don't seem to care. What about all the other dirt roads in Washoe County? Is Waste Management ignoring their service contract with them too? Washoe County has contracted with Waste Management to provide our garbage pickup, and you need to tell them to honor that contract and do their job. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, if we could get staff to help Ms. Parsons so we can get more information on that issue. Back to you, Madam Clerk.
Doug Stoyenoff.
Good afternoon. I'd like to also add to Vicki's saying, I live in Rancho Haven myself. We love our, our private dirt roads. We also like our, that Red Rock. It, it's almost appalling that if you buy a property out there, you actually have to sign a piece of paper saying that Waste Management is the only company that you can use for residential trash. What, what I and most of the other residents would like to see happen is when the contract is up with Waste Management, that it is open to other companies to actually be allowed, not only for our area, but all of Washoe County. On to other things, I'd like to suggest that seeing as how 395 is one of the main throughfares in and out of Reno up north, that the county actually get with the federal government to see if we can get federal funding to help with Red Rock Road, seeing as how during fire season, if there's a fire on or near 395, or if there's a major accident on 395, they route all traffic through Red Rock Road. We also wonder, between Rancho Haven and Sierra Ranchos, there is about 500 residents, which with an average, once added up, is about a half million to three quarters of a million dollars worth of tax revenue for Washoe County. What, what I would like to know is, each year, the last three years that I've actually lived out there, our, our taxes have gone up. What are we getting, seeing as how the only road that is out there is Red Rock Road? What are we getting in turn for what we're paying in excess each year on our taxes? Also, on the budget, I, I saw that you guys have a LED program. One of the things I'd like to bring up is Truckee Meadows Fire Department, the volunteer fire department out there, they, this last year just replaced the lights from regular incandescent lights to LED lights. Great project, but one of the things is, we move out to the country to get away from the lights, to get away from the city. When you stand out there, those lights are really bright. What would be nice is if they were actually directional. I appreciate your time. I enjoyed coming to this meeting today. It's the first one I've ever been to, and I plan on coming tomorrow. Thank you for your time.
Penny Brock.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And if we could also get with Mr. Stoyenoff to make sure that we get his information on the Waste Management issues.
Penny Brock for the record. Please put my comments in the record per NRS. To continue about the Elections Group that I didn't get to finish this morning. First of all, Jennifer Morell founded the Elections Group. At least two of the Election Group's partners are already working in Nevada and Washoe County. Those that I know of are the Center for Tech and Civic Life, and they are a Zuckerberg nonprofit type organization. The other one is the National Vote at Home Institute. It's one of Zuckerberg's other nonprofit organizations he supports. Jennifer Morell is also a consultant for the Democracy Fund, which the founder of eBay is part of his foundation. His foundation was a heavy donor to Zuckerbugs, Zuckerbucks, and the Democracy Fund is a main funder of much election irregularities that went on in 2020. Jennifer Morell and the Elections Group were in the middle of the Democrats 2020 election plans to steal elections. Morell was involved before the election, during the election, and now after the 2020 election. We see that because they're now here in Reno. It is said by those in other states, if Morell is there, you better guard your ballots. The Election Group has been paid, or should have been paid $10,000 in March, according to the contract. And we see here in this documentation from a January strategic meeting that they were retained and, and provide operational review of the most recent election. We have, we have the documentation. They got hired, I believe, by Eric Brown without bringing it forward to the county commission and we, the people, to make comments on. I think this is a serious breach of Mr. Brown's contract, and it should be investigated. I believe maybe the Audit Committee. Another thing quickly about the Audit Committee, it's, the Election Group is going to be put under that committee. I don't really understand why. I had to research and found out that we can go to that committee meeting and make three minute comments. I tried to sign up to get notice on 311. It is not listed, you know, to sign up by email. So that is also another area of IT failure to list that group on 311. Thank you.
Janet Butcher.
Janet Butcher for the record. And again, I'm not representing any group or club. I'm just representing myself as a 30-year resident of Washoe County and a constituent in District Four. I want to finish up on the volunteer, what I started to say, because I wasn't effective enough, that in the last meeting, Manager Brown took issue with volunteers. When discussing the potential of having a tripartisan volunteer elections advisory board, Manager Brown stated that this cannot be solved with volunteers. That is very dangerous thing to do. Yet, on the county website, it states the following. Volunteer, help walk animals, support our libraries, care and advocate for our most vulnerable, become a volunteer firefighter or participant on one of the, our 50 community boards. So based upon that, I took away that Manager Brown doesn't really support and feel that there is effectiveness with our volunteers. Again, I don't understand why we can't bring this back to the citizens of our community. We have a vested interest in this. It is us who care about what's going on. I was a poll worker and worked with a gentleman who was the manager for two weeks. Sat beside him. He was the opposite party that I'm affiliated with, and we got along just fine. So it's not a matter of that we can't get along and we can't come up with a solution. It's our election. It should be our solution. Another thing about Chris Piper, I found a link where it talked about one of his elections that he had in Virginia. And guess what? They had some of the same issues that we had, but we're going to go to him and ask for solutions. Thank you.
Renee Resentis.
Renee Resentis for the record. I also feel that there needs to be an investigation, not only in these, about these groups, but about our county manager and why he went about choosing this group the way he did, leaving out. county manager and why he went about choosing this group the way he did, leaving out two commissioners who do represent the people. I don't know why he would do that unless he just didn't want any flack from anyone else. He wanted to do things his way. I don't know. But there needs to be an investigation, because he's very biased, and we can see that very clearly. And this should be non-biased. Anyway, that's my point, because the way he went about this was just not right. And I called my commissioners. I was called into the board, to speak to the board and answer their questions of the Elections Group when they were here, and learned that Commissioners Herman and Clark knew nothing about it. I called both of them to see if they could tell me what it was about, because we were walking into that meeting blind, and they had not been informed or included. And moving on to something else, we really need the lines painted on the roads. It's really hard to see during the day, let alone at night, and on the highways when you're traveling at higher speeds. That's really dangerous. So if you could maybe have a discussion, put that on the agenda, I'd really appreciate That's all for now. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we will now go to Item 12, Mr. Manager.
Item 12 is Commissioners and County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to Include Boards and Commissions' Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are some items that I wanted to bring up earlier, and you asked me to bring them up at the end, so I'll take a few moments to cover some things that I wanted to bring up earlier. I'd like to talk about the office that the county rents at 170 South Virginia. It's taken me a bit of time to get my question answered about that office space for housing and homeless services staff at 170 South Virginia. We've leased that spot. We've got a three-year lease in place with a fiscal impact of $643,679.05 for rent. And then we have expenses for furnishing that space at $225,170.73 for office furniture. I'm assured by the staff that the office furniture will be used at the new location when the group moves. But I still haven't had my question answered about why not use space at 350 South Center in a building that the county owns instead of spending the $643,000. The Center Street Building is only, you know, a block or two away from this particular address. I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Salerno. At the time, it's taken waiting to get the answers. I requested, and based on last week's county commission meeting, I'd like to see a list of the properties owned by the county, the properties leased by the county, and at what cost. And I think it should be on a spreadsheet format. I'd like to ask Mr. Manager if I can get that sooner than later, possibly this week. The next item I'd like to talk about is the Seoul Cannabis Consumption Lounge. I've been noodling this ever since the vote in January 17, 2023. The Consumption Lounge was not approved by a 3 to 2 vote, but it was a bit unclear because there were two different issues as it came up from the Planning Commission. It's clear from the YouTube video, Mr. Alexander, the founder of Seoul, has been very vocal about the vote, and was quoted in the Reno News in review, saying, "We're at Disneyland, but we can't ride the rides," regarding his frustration over the commission's decision, "since ultimately Consumption Lounges are up to local governments to decide if they will be allowed to operate in city-county jurisdictions." Mr. Alexander said he's thinking of, didn't think the Washoe County Planning Commission understood what was being asked to approve. Also, Mr. Alexander was not able to be at the commission meeting in January, since he was out of the country. I've spoken to Mr. Brown, Mr. Edwards, former Commissioner Hartung, Commissioner Hill, and I'd like, in the interest of fairness, to get back in front of the Planning Commission. How can we get that done? Mr. Alexander only has so much time, and he's in jeopardy of losing a $100,000 deposit, I believe. Next, I would like to find out about the Public Defender applicants. When will we know who's applied for the job? How many applicants do we have? And I mean, can I get more information faster from the county, contemplating, you know, without having to go make a request for public records? I'd like to know who's applying for the Public Defender's Office in advance of a meeting. So many times, we're asked to vote on somebody a day of or a week of, and I'd like to have some information about who's applied, so we can meet those folks and maybe vet them. I have had an opportunity to meet one applicant. I was very impressed with the person, so just like to bring that up. I read an article in the paper about Mr. Par Tols. I don't know the man, but apparently he got a tour of the CARES campus. Can anybody get a tour of the CARES campus? If citizens want to get a tour of the CARES campus, can they make application and do that? Are we allowed to take private citizens through there? Again, about the homeless CARES camp. You know, Food Not Bombs. This is the group who are feeding the vulnerable populations in front of the CARES campus, and they were moved out into the street. Apparently, we widened the fencing around there, increased our boundaries to the point where these people are serving homeless people food in the streets and were run over. And one lady, Michelle Jardine Blair, was killed, and two women were tragically injured. My question is, how's Washoe County making sure we protect our nonprofits, frontline folks that are serving food in the streets? Have other provisions been made? I haven't read about any changes taking place. I just want to check precautions are being made. Also, Mr. Brown, could someone update me about the fire lane that was drawn at the CARES campus that moved the group, this group, into the street? Or Mr. Brown, or who should I talk to about it? Next, I want to talk about Mr. Dwayne Smith, the person that talked about when we talked last week about the tanks, the buried tanks on the new CARES campus. You know, I'd like to get a copy of the EPA Phase 1 brownfield study, and all the docs who were promised to me. I haven't seen any of that yet. I want to find out more about, we've agreed to move forward with this, but I'm not going to let this rest. I want to find out exactly how much it's going to cost extra to remove those petrochemical tanks, and who's going to pay for that. And I think that's all I have. Oh, excuse me. Again, I want to find out, when is this Dandini workforce housing going to be on the agenda to vote? I've asked for it five or six times now. I can't seem to get this on the agenda to vote. This is workforce housing. This is building season. When can we move forward with this? I understand the builder and the sheriff have come to some sort of agreement, and now we're the ones holding this up. We're the bottleneck. And I think Nicholas St. John had a great idea as far as the voters' group, and, you know, why don't we have citizen advisory boards and town hall meetings and get the folks involved and find out what the citizens want done that's legally allowed to be done, without disclosing anybody's names or personal information? But let's get some citizen involvement on this register our voters' issues and find out what the citizens want, not necessarily what Mr. Manager Brown wants. I mean, I'd like to have some citizen involvement. I'd like to find out what the people want and see if we can accommodate that legally. Again, last, but not least, I want to bring up, again, the CARES campus. How can citizens take a tour of that facility? Thank you.
Commissioner Andriola.
Madam Chair, I haven't answered one of those questions right now. That'll take two seconds if...
Mr. Edwards.
Okay. Commissioner Clark, the question about the Dandini area project and the easement and the discussions with the sheriff. I've been informed that this Thursday, there's a meeting at the Regional Public Safety Training Center with that board, and that the developer is presenting the possible resolution of that location to that board on Thursday. And then depending on that outcome, if it all looks good at that point, it would come back this way at that time. So that's the information I have.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Back to you, Commissioner Andriola.
I'm good. Thank you.
I just wanted to get clarification. You know, today during public comment, we heard a lot from folks that were subject matter experts in geothermal, who were format, and others, and then also from Burning Man. So I just am curious, from a legal perspective, where does this project go now, based on the action that was taken at the last meeting?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Edwards.
So right now, barring reconsideration, that item stands as it was decided last week, which was a denial of the permit, reversal of the Board of Adjustment. So there is no permit for it at this time. The decision or the options, I guess, going forward, it's not obviously my call or the county's call to make, but ORMAT, at this point, would decide whether or not they want to seek some kind of judicial relief, like a judicial review. And if they do, we'll get notified, because the county will get served with that lawsuit. And then at that point in time, it would go through the court process, and the court would review the record, and that would include the hearing last week, plus the full record of the Board of Adjustment, whatever was before this board. And a determination would be made whether there was substantial evidence in the record to support the decision that was made last week. That's where it is at this time.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was really distressed a few minutes ago when I found out that the record showed something that I just couldn't understand. Anyhow, I intended last time on Item 15 to vote against the hiring of the Elections Group, and I was just sure I'd voted right, but evidently, I didn't. So if this is the way the record shows, then I would like to request to bring back that item for reconsideration.
Any other items or requests? Okay. Commissioner Clark.
Based on what Ms. Herman, Commissioner Vice Chair Herman, just disclosed, I think it's only fair that we revisit that issue of Number 15. We've heard enough public comment that think that it was, that this voters' group was brought in to the county without proper vetting. I know I didn't know about it until after they were here. I don't think that the, I think that the three people who made the decision to bring them in, none of those folks were elected. I asked Mr. Manager Brown how many votes he received. Does he think he's a county commissioner? Why did he pick that group? It's been revealed to me and others about how many, from his own state of all places. I know Manager Brown's from Virginia. The people in Virginia fired this group. So why would we hire somebody who's fired by the state of Virginia? So I support Ms. Herman, Commissioner Vice, excuse me, Vice Chair Herman, and I think we should bring this back for further discussion on a further agenda item. Thank you.
I don't know if Commissioner Herman, now that I'm remembering our rules, can bring it back, or Vice Chair Herman can bring it back for reconsideration, because she was in, her vote was in the affirmative. And so I think we need someone whose vote was in the negative, correct, Mr. Edwards, to bring that item back.
Very interesting question. I have not seen this scenario come up. Commissioner Herman's request was to review the record, which I think can happen offline. And if her vote was in favor of the prevailing outcome, which was to approve the $100,000 portion of the contract, if I remember correctly...
Yes.
If her vote was in favor of that, she's saying she would like it brought back for reconsideration. If that was her vote in favor of it, then she would be, have been on the prevailing side.
Right.
If her vote was not in favor of it, then what you're saying would be true, that she would not be on the prevailing side and could not request reconsideration. So that's something that has to be checked, I would imagine, offline, once this meeting's done.
Okay. We need to check that, because we have an electronic voting system for a reason, so that we can ensure that we're tracking votes correctly. And so it's really not good for staff, or for business, or for our community, for us to be reversing our votes if that is the case. So I think that we need to make sure that we're really looking at this carefully. I do not want to set a precedent on this issue, because there's a reason where we have invested in all of this electronic voting system. Commissioner Clark.
To your point, we've, thank you for recognizing me. To your point, we've invested all of this, and at this particular time, it appears that Ms. Herman, whether she intended to or unintentionally did vote in the affirmative, anybody who voted in the affirmative, and I'm not an attorney, so I'm asking this, I'm asking this as a question to Mr. Edwards, if she voted in the affirmative, does she have the right to bring it back for reconsideration, based on what the vote was?
Yes. If she was in the prevailing side of the motion, she can request reconsideration.
And I believe that's what she's asking for, and I think we should honor her request.
Well, let's just see what the record reflects, and we can take it from there. And I'm assuming Mr. Edwards will update the board on what that will look like.
Yes, I can pass along, it will, I would expect to come from the clerk's office, what the actual official record is. And we can either, our office, if they send it to us, or the clerk's office can communicate to the board what that official record was.
The reason I'm bringing this up is somebody thought I voted in the affirmative last week. I went in and talked to Madam Clerk. She verified that I did not vote in the affirmative, that Ms. Herman did. So I think the clerk sitting right here has the knowledge of what took place, and she can let us know right now if Ms. Herman voted in the affirmative. If she did, and Ms. Herman is asking for reconsideration, I think we can answer this question right now. I'd ask you, Madam Clerk, what you, what your perception is of the vote last week on Item 15.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I did review the records. Mike Clark was in my office, and we did look at my personal notes from my agenda. And then I went back and I watched the video, and it was, in fact, a 4 to 1 vote to approve the item, Item 15. The document, or the vote count was 4 to 1, based on how the iPads were voted. So the no was from Mike Clark, and the four affirmative were from the other commissioners.
In that case, then, Mr. Edwards, that item can be brought back.
Yes, that puts Commissioner Herman in the prevailing side of the motion and enables her to request reconsideration.
Okay. Then noted. We'll get that on the next agenda. Commissioner Clark, are you signed in again?
No.
Okay. Any other commissioners have comments? Seeing none, we are at the end of the meeting. We are adjourned.